Good evening, everyone. It is now 5:00 p.m. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Amani Union High School District for Wednesday, September 17th, 2025. This time, Dr. Zuniga, if you'll take your roll call.
Thank you, Board President. Member Ricardo Padilla.
Mr. Padilla.
Member Ricardo Padilla.
Here!
Thank you. Member Queywin.
Here.
Member Dr. Marisa Galvez.
Present.
Member Dr. Luis Guzman.
Present.
Member Franchia Bionis.
Present.
All present.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. We have a full complement of the board in our executive cabinet, including legal counsel. At this time, we will move on to item number two, closed session. Mr. Legal Counsel, if you'll please read us into closed session.
Mr. President, the items for closed session this evening as shown on Section 2 of Section A of the agenda. Item 2A, Government Code Section 54957, Employee Discipline Dismissal Release, two matters. Item B, Government Code 54957.6, Labor Negotiations for EMUEA. Item C, under the same provision, negotiations for EMUEA Adult Education. Item D, under the same section, labor negotiations for CSEA Chapter 11. And those are the items for closed session consideration this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Legal Counsel. Dr. Zuniga, do we have any public comments for closed session items?
No public comments.
Thank you. At this time, the board will recess into closed session. We will return at 6:00 p.m. or as close to 6:00 as possible.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special board meeting of the Almonte Union High School District's Board of Trustees. Today is Wednesday, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I call the open session to order at six-twenty. This time, Dr. Zuniga, if you'll take role.
Thank you, President. Member Ricardo Padilla?
Here.
Member Qui win?
Present.
Member Dr. Marisa Galvez?
Present.
Member Dr. Luis Guzman?
Present.
Member Fernando Briones?
Present.
Student member Tessa Segueda?
Present.
Student member Ashley Yu?
Present.
All present.
Thank you, Dr. Zuniga. We have a full complement of the board, the executive cabinet, our student trustees, and legal counsel. At this time, those in the audience, if you are willing and able, if you'll please stand and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item number three, approval of the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda as submitted today?
I move to approve the agenda for today, Wednesday, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Is there a second?
I seconded.
Seconded. Moved by trustee Padilla, seconded by trustee Nguyen. Any discussion or changes? Say none. All who are in favor approving the agenda as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Say none. The agenda is approved. Moving on to public comment, we have eighteen public comment cards. I will read this statement, and then I will refer to legal counsel to clarify. I had it. Apologies, everyone. I forgot to bring my computer today, so I'm doing this off my phone. Okay, public comment, addressing the Board of Trustees. Members of the public who wish to address the Board of Trustees on any matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Trustees may do so during the public comment section, sorry, public comment portion of the Board of Trustees' agenda. However, pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act, Government Code, Section five-four-nine-five-zero at SEA, the Board of Trustees, except under very specific emergency circumstances, will not be able to act on any matter discussed during the public comment portion of the agenda until such matter is properly placed on a future meeting agenda. The Board of Trustees may direct district staff to investigate and/or schedule certain matters for consideration at a future board meeting. The Board of Trustees cannot respond to specific questions from the public. At this time, I do have a question for legal counsel. Today's a special board meeting. What are the rules under the Brown Act regarding public comments?
So the general rule under the Brown Act is that public comment is allowed and required in all regular meetings. Public comment can be made on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. For special meetings, public comment is limited to items on the special meeting agenda.
Items limited, limited to items on the special meeting agenda?
Correct.
So if it's not on the agenda, and that's not the topic of the public comment, we can ask the speaker to return at a regular meeting to make their comments then?
Correct.
Or ask them to limit their comments to only agenda items?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, so most of the comments that were submitted don't specify items on the agenda, so I'll ask the speakers, as they call your names, what item on the agenda you're speaking to. If it's not an agenda item, we'll ask you to make your comments, limit them to agenda items, or you're free to return at the next regular scheduled board meeting and make general public comments then. First up, David Seegrist. Mr. Seegrist, your comments today are to which agenda item?
Okay, members of the board and superintendent.
Sorry, Mr. Seegrist, before you begin, to what agenda item are you speaking?
I'm not speaking on a item. I'm just general comment.
Okay, so we're not doing general comments today?
Public comment.
We're not doing public comment for general items today?
Well, general items, then.
So you're welcome to return to our next meeting.
So legal counsel, I'd like to, I'd like to say something. Legal counsel?
This is not your opportunity, sir.
I would like to speak.
No, we're during public comments.
I would like to speak, legal counsel.
We're at public comment. Next up, Estela Torres de Seegrist.
The board is able to have a discussion to see if we have consensus of whether the board members here can hear? The comments that are here to make.
This is public comment. I've called up the next speaker. Mrs. Seegrist, if you want to come up?
So the board president, being the chair of the meeting, would have the authority to call for such vote under the board policies. Mr. Padilla?
So you're telling me that Mr. Briones, if there's people here that are people here to make public comment, Mr. Briones, taking it upon himself, can send anybody who's here to make a public comment home?
No.
If Briones can make that decision?
No, he, well, he couldn't do that under the Brown Act for any public comments on items on the published agenda for a special meeting.
So the public does not have the right to come and speak on whatever they want to speak of to the board?
At a special meeting, no. At a, at a regular, at a regular meeting, yes. So the standard for a regular meeting is any subject, any matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board, which is very broad. But under the Brown Act, for a special meeting, it's an item on the special meeting agenda.
But we can still talk to each board member to see if they want to send all these people home. I want to hear from Marisa. I want to hear from Luis. I want to hear from Mr. Qui win. Do you want to hear? I want to hear from our students. Do our students want to hear the public and what they have to say?
So at this time, we're at, we're at public comment. Mrs. Torres de Seegrist, what item are you speaking on?
Can't we get a discussion from the rest of the board members on whether they want to hear the public here and, and hear what they have to say?
That, that would be a matter of the administration of the meeting, which the chair would decide.
Okay, so then, so then your response to me is Mr. Briones has the authority to send whoever wants to make a public comment today home because the item is not on this agenda? They cannot come here and talk about whatever they want because Mr. Briones is the president, and he can do that. That's what you're telling me.
He has the ability, what I am telling you is.
So there's going to be some very pissed off people if they don't get to speak today, and we can.
So, Mr. Padilla, if you could stop interrupting the meeting, I appreciate that.
Mr. Briones, the public needs to know that you just silenced everybody.
Mrs. Torres de Seegrist, what item are you speaking on?
Well, this is totally new for me. I was, when I was in the Board of Trustees for twelve years, we never had that, but, no, I didn't have anything about the, one of the items of our agenda. I came here to talk about a special person that I want to talk about. Is it possible to do it?
Any items on the agenda?
No items in the agenda.
Okay, so you're welcome to return at a regular meeting to speak during public, during public comments.
So I can escuchar de Luis y de Marisa. Ellos quieren que se junta continuo, or no?
Next up, Maria del Carmen Perez. Mr. Padilla, you're interrupting the meeting.
I want to hear from Luis, and I want to hear from Marisa. Open your mouth!
Maria, excuse me, sir, you're interrupting the meeting. This is public comment. You're interrupting.
They do what you asked them to do.
Maria del Carmen Perez.
Open your mouth, Luis Guzman! Open your mouth, Marisa!
Sir, can you, can you lower your voice and stop interrupting? Sir?
No, no, ma'am, this is not the time. Excuse me. No.
Excuse me, this is not the time for interruptions. Maria del Carmen Perez. Maria del Carmen Perez. Maria del Carmen Perez. Está la señora Maria del Carmen Perez. All right, we'll go on to the next one.
Hi, good evening.
Oh, is that you? Sorry. Señora, usted es Maria del Carmen Perez? De qué, de qué?
Adult education.
Adult, so it has to be an item on the agenda tonight to speak on? Oh, so we do have a presentation? Okay, so she doesn't need to make public comment. Okay, thank you. Maribel Manuico?
Excuse me, I would like to say a comment now. It says public comments. Public is us. That is what you have to do. Now, I am a member of the United States. Okay, then, you, you are, you are in direct violation of my First Amendment rights. My First Amendment says I have the right to speak. It says public comments. It doesn't say address any special anything. Therefore, I am assuming that I have the right to file a lawsuit against this district for violating my First Amendment rights. Today is Constitution Day. Here's what today is. It says public comments. It does not say address any special item. Therefore, I intend. I intend to pursue my legal. I intend to pursue my legal...
Thank you. Thank you so much.
No information today?
Yeah.
So move on to board member communication. We'll begin...
Yes, seriously. That's what 34 years of service does.
All right, we're gonna take a quick recess while we wait for the room to close.
And we're gonna continue on with oral and written communication. Dr. Zuniga had no items tonight, so I will then turn it over to our student trustees, Ashley and Tessa.
Um, so for Elmani High School, they're having their homecoming on the sixth of September, which the theme is Through the Looking Glass. And then for Mountain View High School, there was wins against La Quinta Aztecs from two eighteen to nine. They had a rally on August twenty-ninth, which was their welcome back rally, which was the theme of Harry Potter and a playing game of Quidditch. This was also a class competition. And then they also had a ribbon cutting ceremony and a back to school night last Tuesday.
Some things they're currently focusing on are homecoming and the SAC resolutions. Currently, they're having a spirit week to promote attendance, another one next week for homecoming, which is next Friday. A home- they're also having a homecoming fashion show this Friday as well as the quinceañera fashion show on the thirtieth. For child cancer awareness, they're decorating the hallways for gold- gold- with gold ribbons on the walls. For suicide prevention, they're bringing puppies to school to act as like therapy dogs. Some things they're focusing on now are- For the month of October, since October is a brand cancer awareness, some things that they wanna do next month are collaborating with the women empowerment clubs from around our school sites to do like an event and try and put something on with everyone involved with the students.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, that's it.
Thank you, thank you both. Uh, this time I'll turn it over to trustee Nguyen. And just a reminder, if we could limit our comments to five minutes.
Okay, in the last two weeks, we've, um, after the last board meeting, I made a school side visit, La Royal High School visit, Rosemead High School visit, Salamani's side visit with Dr. Zuniga yesterday. I attended SAC meeting on nine-eight, and I went to Rosemead back to school night yesterday, and nine-eleven remembrance at Rosemead City Hall. And I also went to Mountain View High School ribbon cutting. The highlight of my activity, four of them. So I, uh, I was invited by the principals, Salanito, to attend the Renaissance Assembly in Rosemead High School. They showcased a beautiful, you know, showcase of all the team, all the activity, a lot of energy. You know, I came out about a few like ten years younger. And, you know, and they, they display unity, diversity. They even have folklorico, you know, dancing and, you know, it's beautiful. I mean, it, it, and I mean, thank you to the leadership team over there and, and, you know, all the staff. And I also went to Rosemead School District Board Meeting on nine-four. And I, and Mr. Padilla was there with me. And I was there to present all of the data on the math from the last spring two thousand twenty-five and the Math, Rio Hondo Math Academy result. And all the board member, you know, both Latinos, you know, Latino, Latina, and one white board member, they all jumped on board with both hand and feet, and they really appreciated what we did. We also went to, uh, you know, uh, Mr. Assembly Myfong Outstanding Educator Award. And I was, uh, you know, asked to be a guest of honor from Mr. Tony Wong, and also asked to be ambassador for CD of Rosemead on behalf of them so they can hand out a certificate of recognition. In addition, I was given, given certificate recognition from Senator Susan Brullo so I can give to Mr. Tony Wong and also, um, you know, from Senator Sasa Rene Sanchez. So he, he, he's an amazing guy, he's an amazing math teacher from La Royal. And when Mr. Myfong spoke of him, everybody jaws just drop. And people inspire from San Marino School District, from, from Acadia School District, and from Temple School District. And those are very high performing new school district when they hear of the record of what he did. And I think he's the most recognized teacher, you know, even, you know, in, you know, in San Gabriel Valley. And everybody just admire him. So we also went to Elmani City School District, the same thing. We just presented math data and, and Rio Hondo Academy result, summer schools result. And I just asked them for more collaboration, double down on the collaboration with our school district because math is so important. And, you know, list the release from NAEP, National Academic Education Progress Report, just a couple of weeks ago, over a week ago, it's terrible in math. So that's why I asked them double down this year, work with our school district so we can align our curriculum so we can move forward. Because I haven't seen any schedule for a cow or vertical curriculum. So I just asked them to double down, we can work together to make it work. And last but not least, you know, and, you know, I really kudos to Rosemead School for the excellent back to school night. And I received so much kudo, especially for the community liaison. Miss Appar- Miss Diane Apparicio-Vargas, she able to invite forty-four agency for community resources. That's the most I ever seen so far. And the, and the leadership over there have a beautiful welcoming show. And it's a beautiful event, it's phenomenal. And also, I want to kudos to the department, math department chair, Ms. May Chang. She able to pull all the math teachers together and move forward with our math curriculum nicely. And also the teacher on board with it, and I can see it, I can feel it. The vibe is totally different from last year. And kudos to Ms. Salanito, kudos to the assistant principal, Ms. Sada Chal, and, you know, and Mr. Joseph Wu and Ms. Montano and Mr. Chira Monte. They are so wonderful, they're just like, wow, all a machine. And that's all I have the report today.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen, Mr. Padilla.
Yes, uh, on September eighth, I attended the college night at South Elmani High School. Awesome, I saw so many kids getting so much information regarding the colleges that they were interested in. Very well attended, very successful, kudos to everybody that put that together. On September ninth, we did do the ribbon cutting ceremony at Mountain View High School on their modernization project, and then attended Mountain View High School. Uh, the ribbon cutting, there were, there were a good amount of people. Uh, Mountain View High School, uh, you know, I don't mince my words. They could have done a much better job of, uh, of the people that attended. There were very few parents, so, uh, we gotta do something different. We gotta figure out why the parents didn't attend. Um, I was listening to the principal and everybody speak, and, uh, it was just board members and the cabinet. I think I saw two parents there, so either we move the tacos closer or we gotta figure something out, because that really concerned me. September tenth, Elmani High School. Always enjoy going to Elmani High School, love all the food, all the clubs, I support it. I had some inari, some esquite, some fruit, I bought everything. I like to support the clubs. Uh, well job to Mr. Cuevas, always very happy with, uh, Elmonte High School and the academic growth that they're doing and, uh, just the, the unity that I see at that school. Uh, September eleventh, Rosemead High School, big kudos to Janine Salanito, probably the best back to school night I saw this year. Uh, just forty-six resource tables at Mesaparicio brought together to Rosemead High School, my alma mater. Great job, Mesaparicio, you're an amazing community liaison, and I have a lot of respect for you. Also, congratulations to RHS, Rosemead High School, for being named National PTA School of Excellence. Uh, they received that award. You know, I am so proud of their executive board, kudos to Vicky Soltero, Vanessa Gallardo, Oscar Magaña, Andrea Martinez, Desiree Martinez, and Hannah Genie. Congratulations for the work that you do with that PTA. Uh, the Parent Teacher Student Association, it gives me great pride that you guys received this very prestigious award. Uh, that is my alma mater, and so, uh, it just speaks to the greatness that I've always been accustomed to at Rosemead High School. Ms. Salanito, thank you for bringing my culture alive. Uh, being Mexican-American, I love to listen, watch ballet folklorico, beautiful performances. Thank you for translating in so many languages. I always love how you translate in English, Spanish, Vietnamese, Cantonese, Mandarin. Uh, there's, everybody at your campus knows what the heck is going on during back to school night. And it wasn't always like that, Ms. Janine Salanito. And you and I had some serious conversations about this topic, but I got, I must give credit where credit is due. Janine Salanito has really grown as an administrator, and I cannot say enough great things about her leadership at, uh, Rosemead High School along with her staff. Also, on September fourth, uh, I attended, my colleague and I, thank you so much, Qui. He and I both went and talked to the Rosemead Elementary School District about doing something to help our Latino kids that are drowning with the math program that they currently offer over there. Uh, they need to engage in this Rio Hondo Academy program that has been very successful, and I'm gonna be more vocal every day regarding this program. And the superintendent was receptive, and so was the board. I have a lot of relationships over there, and I have no doubt that they will engage in the Rio Hondo Math Academy. Lastly, I went to my own school district where I have my day job for thirty-four years, but I didn't go there as their employee, I went there as an elected official. I went there as the senior board member of the Elmani Union High School District to let them know, uh, that the Rio Hondo Math Academy is a program that truly works. I know tonight we have a presentation, and I can't wait to hear more about it, but I know that it is successful, it is the most success that I have ever seen in my thirty-four year career for math test scores and achievement for Latino kids. Uh, our Asian kids also did really well. And, you know, I've been called, called about being a racist because I've been talking so candidly about the poor test scores of Latino students in this district, and I'm not going to stop. It's just gonna come with more fuel and more fire, that we need to do something different. We cannot continue to do what we've always done, like the traditional math summer school that we give, where kids only get two hours of instruction during summer school. That does not work, we need our kids to get more. And, uh, for those people that say that, you know, coming to summer school from eight to two, that our kids can't do it, or that it's too hard and it's too much math, stop projecting all those insecurities on our kids. Our kids can do it, and we have the data to support it. And so, kudos to those schools who took advantage of, uh, participating in the Rio Hondo College Math Academy. I know that Ms. Yolanda Emerson will be here, and I can't wait to hear her speak and give us the quantitative data. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, that's all I have.
Trustee Galavies.
Yeah, loud.
Good evening. Um, I attended the College and Career Fair as well this year, this is the second one. I attended last year before I became a board member because I wanted to take part in our community events. Um, and that was really, really beautifully orchestrated. This year, it was just as amazingly orchestrated, there were so many students. I think at one point, they said they had handed out over six hundred backpacks. So I think they got about eight hundred students total to come out. Um, as the night went on and it got a little bit cooler, because it was really hot at first when it first started, more and more families were in attendance, and that was really nice to see. Uh, I too was able to attend the ribbon cutting and most of the other events that some of our colleagues mentioned. I went to a few back to school nights as well, it is nice to see our campuses. Um, I look forward to hopefully seeing more work on the walls and classrooms as I walk around with time. Uh, but it is really good to try and get to our campuses. That's it for me tonight.
Thank you, trustee Galavies, trustee Dr. Guzman.
Yeah, so I, uh, also attended the Mountain View High School ribbon cutting ceremony. And to look at the campus now and see how it was even a few years ago, um, you wouldn't recognize it, it's such a beautiful campus. Um, so really proud and happy that those students get to graduate on that campus this year. Um, and I also attended, uh, like, some of the other board members of South Elmani High School College and Career Fair for the district. Um, and I wanna congratulate, uh, Dr. Morales and the entire team for, um, just how beautiful the setup and the organization of that event was, Dr. Zuniga. Um, it was really encouraging and inspiring to see so many students come out and be really excited about going off to college, um, especially those that have never been away from home. Um, and to know that they were supported by their parents and the community to go out, um, to universities and colleges that are hours away, sometimes states away. Um, it was just really great to see how excited everybody was to, um, the potential to start a college and, um, their universities next year. So that was really beautiful to see. Um, this past weekend, um, among, along with some of the other board members here, I attended, and Dr. Zuniga, I attended the California Latino School Board Association Unity Conference, um, which also, um, featured members of the Asian American Pacific Islander, um, School Board Association along with the Black African Heritage, um, school board members and their national, or state organization to talk about the challenges that our students are facing collectively and individually. Um, and just the ways that we can all work together to really, um, take on these challenges, both from immigration related issues that are impacting all of our communities to financial issues. And so it was a really, um, great learning opportunity with, uh, other board members from throughout the state. Um, and just to see, uh, the superintendents also in attendance was really good to, um, get a different perspective from, uh, school boards and superintendents from throughout the state, including rural, um, places, and just get ideas of how we can do, um, things better, differently, or even implement new things. So that was really great to, um, get to attend that conference. And I look forward to attending next year's conference as well. And that's all for me.
Thank you, Dr. Guzman, Dr. Galavies.
Sorry, I have a quick add, because he just reminded me, because he attended the conference. Um, a board member from another district stopped me while we were at the conference, and she just wanted to congratulate us on how well we get along. Um, it was really nice to hear that, she said- she said she had served on a board for about eight years, and she had never been in that kind of harmonious relationship, like with board members, so I think it's really important that we say that, I wish there were more people here to hear that, but I gotta kudos for just how respectful we treat each other, the three of us were in attendance at this conference this past weekend, and I think it's important that that gets said, you know, because respecting each other is key up here, we may not all have the same ideas or believe in the same things, but we do need to respect one another, and I think that's important, and I don't often feel that from all members on this board.
Thank you, I think you and I may have talked to the same person at different times, because I have received the same kudos from, from this individual, I will, I will say she, okay, just so that I wanted to be sure, yeah, I did get that same, the same kudos from her, and I did appreciate her comments as well. I only have a few items to report out tonight, I think my comments of, my colleagues have touched upon most of the items, or the events that I attended as well, including the South Almani High School back-to-school night, our district college night, I did wanna share some piece of data that we received from Dr. Rivas last week, we saw a slight dip in attendance, but an increase in individual student attendance, so it was kind of a net zero, because we had less non-students attend, but more district students attend, I think it was less, the attendance was lowered by fourteen overall, but student attendance was up by fourteen from last year. So, I read that in the memo, hope I'm not reading it wrong, but it was, I was happy to see how many folks did attend, I was commenting to staff while we were there, that while I was observing in the quad there at South Almani High School, that it looked like it was lunchtime during South Almani's day, and South Almani's population is a little over a thousand, and so gave me the impression that we might hit that number, I think we were a little bit short, but I was happy to see that we did have more students this year attend college night compared to last year. So, thank you to the staff for organizing, I know that is a huge, huge, massive undertaking, and just a special thank you to all the College and Career Center directors for all their work that they've put in, because it takes a lot to organize that event, but it's a very well-attended event, obviously, and it means a lot to our families and to our students, for them to be able to speak to representatives from universities across not only California, but across the country as well, both public and private universities. I also attended the Mountain View High School ribbon cutting and back-to-school night, to Dr. Guzman's comments about Mountain View's campus, having graduated from there twenty-five years ago, I just got the invitation to my twenty-five-year high school graduation reunion, yeah, the campus has changed a lot over the last twenty-five years, and I always thought it looked beautiful, I think it looks even more beautiful now, and I think it's a testament to the amount of investment that we do not only at Mountain View, but all of our campuses, we wanna make sure that our students are attending facilities that are not just well-kept, but go above and beyond, and I wanna say thank you to our community who supported our bond measure in two thousand two, and two thousand eight, two thousand eighteen, Measures Y, Measures D, Measure HS, because those dollars were all invested directly on our campuses, and they have a direct benefit for our students. I had the opportunity to attend the Student Advisory Committee meeting last week, and I was happy to see, as we're talking about facilities, that our consultants were there presenting the Facilities Master Plan and getting input from our students, because that's one of the components to putting together a plan, is ensuring that our students give input, they're the ones who are on the campuses, they are the individuals who experience those locations on a regular basis, and I have to remind myself fairly frequently, that yes, I attended one of our schools, but it's no longer my campus. As much as I have fond memories of a particular place on campus, maybe a particular building, classroom, whatever it may be, and they look different now, that's okay, because I'm not there on a regular basis, those students are, and so their input is the most important thing that we need. Not to say that the input from staff and faculty and the community at large isn't important, but our students really, they're the ones who are gonna be experiencing those facilities, so thank you to our SAC students for giving your feedback, and it was a lot of feedback, I saw the number of post-its and notes on those big printouts, a lot of thought went into the feedback that you presented, so Ashley and Tessa, when you return and meet with your SAC representatives, please give them my thanks for all the work that they're doing. And then, lastly, I did attend the CLSBA Unity Conference as well, as Dr. Guzman and Dr. Galavies have spoken about, this is a conference that I always enjoy, the annual education conference that CSBA puts together is great, it's a very large conference, it's, you know, brings folks from across the state, this conference is much smaller, and it's tailored to those individuals who are either Latino or serve Latino populations, although we did have a lot of affinity partners there as well, Dr. Guzman mentioned APISMA, and I think it was CAPSY who was there, and it's great to hear from everyone, and talk about the challenges that we're facing, whether they be budgetary, whether it's because of immigration enforcement, whether it's declining enrollment, but more importantly, it's really great to hear about the ideas that people are bringing to the table and how to address a lot of those challenges, and it's great to be able to meet with my colleagues from throughout California who serve Latino populations, or who serve other affinity populations, and to hear from them, what they're doing, what they're implementing at their school districts, and how we may be doing something similar, but maybe we were missing a component that they have identified. So, it's a great conference, this year, it was in San Diego, so it wasn't a very long drive like last year where it was in Monterey, but it was great to be amongst so many wonderful individuals. And then the last item I wanted to share is, yesterday I had the opportunity to meet with our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, thank you to Ms. Haro, who's here today, who's a member who was there yesterday, along with the remainder of the committee, in particular, the Chair, Mr. Redia, who invited me, Dr. Lynn, and Ms. Macias, who are providing updates on our projects, and they did share about the master's facilities plan as well, and so it's, I have a lot of gratitude for our members, because that's, not only is it a requirement that we have a bond oversight committee, but it ensures that there are resident voices as well to give feedback, and to ensure that what we say we're gonna do is actually being done, and that the money is being directed just to the projects that we identified, that there aren't dollars being misdirected or misspent in any other way, so thank you to the committee and for all your work that you do. Those are all my items tonight, thank you. So, at this time, we'll move on to Section D, Information Presentation, Item Number One, School Site Instruction Report and Student Representative Update from the Almani Rosemead Adult School.
Good evening, esteemed board members, Dr. Zuniga, District Cabinet, I'd like to introduce my MRAS administration, my name is Oscar Gomez, I'm the Assistant Principal at the Almani Rosemead Adult School, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Paul Diaz, our Program Administrator for ESL. Ms. Carrie Froge, Program Administrator for the Adult Secondary Education. And Ms. Lisa Ton, Program Administrator for CTE. Also in the audience, we also have one of our staff members, Annette Felix, who is our Lead CTE Teacher. We'll be talking tonight about our instruction report, particularly looking at medical pathways in CTE, and focusing on a particular program, Pharmacy Technician, and as part of our student report, we also have some students who've come out of that program, and a current student that is participating in our ESL program, has gone through our ESL program, has gone through our CTE program, and is also entering our Adult Secondary Education, to provide you kind of a holistic approach of what we do at the Almani Rosemead Adult School. Okay, the Almani Rosemead Adult School, Almani Rosemead Adult School offers nine distinct medical pathways, so we do offer programs like Medical Assistant, Medical Billing and Coding, Pharmacy Technician Program, Personal Care Aid, Emergency Medical Technician, EKG Technician, Nursing Assistant, and Phlebotomy. And for those of you guys that are listening at home, Emergency Medical Technician is our newest program, they just got certified over the summer, it's an EMT program, if you see the picture there, we have like a realistic ambulance. So, our next quarter begins October 1st, so those interested, please come by our school, and we will sign you up, this is one of our newest programs, and we really wanna promote this program, and its growth and its infancy right now. Okay, right now, we're gonna do a brief video of our MRAS medical pathways, and this will give you a quick description of all the different programs that we have at MRAS.
My dream goal is to go into medical school, teachers here at MRAS, they want you to pass, they want you to succeed.
The goal of the medical pathways is to train the students with quality education, so they're ready to go to work, it's low cost, and all of our medical programs are certified. Some of the courses that we offer are Pharmacy Tech, Medical Assisting, Nursing Assisting, Medical Billing and Coding, Phlebotomy.
Phlebotomy is basically the art of drawing blood, it helps doctors determine what's wrong with the patient.
Lots of hands-on experience, our school is great, they provide the students with up-to-date, state-of-the-art equipment, so that they're ready, they're ready to go out there and work.
A lot of our CTE courses also have some kind of externship or connection where it's on-the-job training, which frequently leads to them being hired.
When the students finish my program, they take their national test, and then, once they pass that, they become Licensed Pharmacy Technicians, and from there, they can work in a variety of settings, they can do retail, hospital, home health.
I chose this program because I would like to develop skills that would help me when I become a doctor, also because I need to gain clinical experience for my application for medical school.
We have a great support staff, we have counselors, free babysitting, there's, there's just a lot of resources for the students to help them achieve this, I've had students that went on to become PharmDs, lots of the medical students go into nursing, LVN, RN, they also go to Physicians Assistance, or Physical Therapy Assistance, so I've seen this program change people's lives, by getting an advanced role, being able to provide for their family in ways that they couldn't do before.
I would highly recommend Medical System Program here at MRAS, because they help you study, they help you develop.
It's really transformational for some students, we want students to feel safe, we want them to feel comfortable, we want them to feel supported, and that is our mission as a school.
Okay, so looking at that video itself, you notice that all our programs are hands-on, and that's kind of the biggest component of the adult school, is essentially providing skill-oriented education to all our adult students. I'm the newest member at the adult school, so they call me the K-12 person throughout the consortium and throughout my new stand, I've been there since July 1st, but one of the things that I've been immersing myself is knowing about essentially where our funding comes from, what our governing board is, so for us, the California Adult Education Program is who essentially funds us and provides us directives on, you know, what to follow, but part of their, their mission, it's also the mission of the state, is career technical education, is in California, is to provide industry-linked programs and services that allow all individuals to achieve economic self-sufficiency and compete in the global market. Looking at the CTE and CATE mission and purpose, there's specific pillars that address CTE and growth for our adult students, particularly looking at support and economic prosperity, and looking at that particular section, what stands out to me is skilled workers, we're looking to workers to learn a trade, learn a skill, and be able to join the job force as soon as possible, promote self-sufficiency, it provides individuals with skills necessary to reach career goals and achieve financial independence, and that's our goal at the adult school, is to provide individuals the skills to be able to attain a career and start their, their life with a skill-based career that will be able to pay the bills. Integrate with workforce development, the programs are developed in collaboration with businesses and industries aligned with the skills that are in high demand in the labor market, when we introduce our Pharmacy Tech Program, you'll learn about externships and the collaboration that we have done with outside agencies to support our students and to learn the skills that they're learning in the classroom and apply it to real-life scenarios. We also address diverse needs, I'll be showing some data of what students we serve at the adult school, but the big component of the adult school is looking at adult learners, including those that need basic skills, English language training, and career advancement programs, those who have visited MRAS before, our core is ESL, High School Diploma, and CTE, so we have for a variety, but the goal is to integrate those components, and a big part of our, our mission in the, in the next three-year plan that we have for our consortium is to look at, really look at our ESL population, have them learn English, get through the six different levels that we offer, and then integrate them into either our CTE programs or into our High School Diploma programs, to continue that education, which basically is the next pillar, which is create seamless pathways, a key focus is on creating smooth transitions from students from adult education to post-secondary education into high, high demand jobs, so that's key. Looking at California, a very competitive state, we wanna make sure that our, our students are lifelong learners, like many of us are here, one of the things here, we do have Rio Hondo here, so we have those, those pathways, and we work together in this consortium to make sure that we look at programs that benefit our students, and then look at that post-secondary opportunity, we also offer dual enrollment classes at the adult school in conjunction with Rio Hondo, to provide a variety of educational opportunities for our students. At this time, I'm gonna introduce Mrs. Lisa Ton, who's gonna be introducing our instructor for the course, Ms. Teresa Acheson.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, Dr. Zuniga and Cabinet members, my name is Lisa Ton, I'm the CTE Program Administrator, thank you for the opportunity to share our instructional report today. Before I introduce Ms. Teresa Acheson, our Pharmacy Technician Instructor, I'd like to take a moment to recognize her work. Teresa has been a pharmacy technician for forty-one years, and started teaching in nineteen eighty-nine. She has joined, she joined us in two thousand seventeen, and since then, she has completely transformed the program, adding a pharmacy lab, building strong externships, partnerships with local and national pharmacies, and securing countless hours, oh, I'm sorry, securing accreditation from the American Society of Health System Pharmacists. She also spends countless hours mentoring her students, ensuring they are well-prepared for both their externships and certification exams. She is committed to the field and stays active in professional organizations to support and advance the profession, profession. In November, she will be honored with the two thousand twenty-five California Society of Health System Pharmacists Pharmacy Technician Achievement Award. We are very proud to have her on our team, and now, I would like to introduce Ms. Teresa Acheson, who will be speaking about MRAS Pharmacy Technician Programs.
So, as you can see, the Pharmacy Technician Course, we put the flyers up there, you can see it's, it's only sixty dollars for these students to register for the class, that's for their registration fees. I, I have other fees up there, but just to let you know, the whole course with books and their licensing fees, and everything is under seven hundred dollars. Yeah, that's, that's amazing, I had a niece that took it at a private school and paid like thirty thousand dollars, yeah, so we're the best kept secret right now, and our program is accredited, I'm gonna move this, these, these flyers are, are at MRAS, and they're in the registration office, we also have the catalogs, I think this is in the catalog also. Are you flipping? Okay. So, the program prepares the students to work in a variety of pharmacy practices, and, and under the direct supervision of the pharmacist, so without the pharmacist, we really don't exist, we're there to assist the pharmacist, however, I will say that the pharmacists have moved more to clinical roles, and you may not be aware, but when you go to the pharmacy, it's the technicians that are back there, that are doing the compounding, and that are mixing your prescriptions, and, and counting your prescriptions, and if you're in the hospital, we're making your IVs, we, there's a lot of stuff that's behind the scenes that we do, and we're even getting more clinical. Recently, the California State Board of Pharmacy has allowed us to do immunizations, as long as we meet the criteria, so we have to be, we have to have CPR, we have to have our national certification, we have to bend through a specialized training program on immunizations, and so that's just one of the clinical roles, and we're hoping soon to be able to offer that to our students at a, a very good cost, so. So we can move on. Accreditation. So our program is accredited through the American Association of Health System Pharmacists, with also the Accreditation Council for Pharmacy Education. Together, it's called PTAC. So in, we applied for this before COVID. And then our visit, I was a nervous wreck when we had our visit. It's like a WASC accreditation, but it was just, you know, it's just me. And of course, I have a lot of support from my administrators, but it was just me. You know, with WASC, you have everybody. So, um, I'm really happy to say we got a full, we have an eight-year accreditation. So what's up here is just telling us what that means. We followed the model curriculum that is set forth by the ASHP accreditation. And the first thing is the key element in that column. Then you have didactic, which is the classroom portion, the theory. And so that is column two. So whatever the key element is, this is what we teach in the classroom. The next column is the activities that we must do in the lab. The next column is the activities that have to be mastered in their clinical sites. So the didactic, which I was saying was a classroom instruction. It includes pharmacology, which is the study of the drugs and how they act within the body. And we have a lab with that. And then pharmacy principles, that could be the pharmacy law. It goes through, um, like all the labs, the labs would be in there. And then we have separate, we have math for the pharmacy technician. Pharmacy math is different from just regular math. It's a lot of conversions, and it's a lot, it's basic algebra. But we don't use that word because it scares off a lot of people. So all, and then we do national certification. So every Friday afternoon, we have the NHA exam, which is EXCPT. And the school provides all the training materials for the students. They're given modules to study, which they can do at home. Then I have textbooks in the class. So they have a semester, so of just studying for the exam. The school also pays for their exam. That's a total of about 432 hours just in the lecture, the classroom instruction. Then we have our simulated lab experience, which I don't know if you've ever seen it, but we have a beautiful pharmacy lab. I'm so grateful for it. And they do 108 total hours in simulation. Then the experiential, um, according to our accreditation, they need to do at least 130. So they do 130 hours in a dispensing pharmacy, which would be like a retailer, a community pharmacy. And then they can choose to do another 130 hours, which could be in a hospital or a, we call it a closed pharmacy. And what that is, is it's a warehouse, but it's just pharmacy. And they do different types of packaging and preparing products for our elderly patients that may be in skilled nursing facilities. Now, when the students go to their externships, this is where they're getting their day-to-day, um, real life, it's the real-life setting of what you're going to do. And a lot of times, they get hired at their sites. If they don't get hired, they get a good recommendation, and pharmacy is a very small world. So it's nothing for a pharmacist to say, hey, you're really good tech, but we don't have a position here. Let me call one of my friends. So that's, the experiential is very important.
If I may very quickly.
Yes.
Since you were talking about the experiential learning and their externships at pharmacies, just to let you know, I had the pleasure of interacting with one of your students just a few weeks ago. Who's externing at Walgreens here on Peck Road.
Yes.
Which is where my dad gets his prescriptions refilled. So I, I showed up to pick up his medication. I actually had to walk into the store because I needed to pick up something else. And when he came to the window, I realized the ID was an MRAS ID. And so I asked him if he was in the pharmacy tech program. He said he was. He was working on his hours. And so he shared a little bit about his experience. I do apologize, I don't remember his name.
Guillermo.
Uh, yeah, thank you, yes. Thank, I'm glad that you know them right off the top of your head and that you know his name and where he's at. But, um, it got me thinking about students who, to your point earlier, who are looking for perhaps a new career or maybe are exploring different options before going off into the world. And yes, MRAS is definitely that hidden gem because you can take a program like this for under $1,000 versus driving down the freeway to a private for-profit college, who shall remain nameless.
Yeah.
And pay several thousand dollars for the same instruction.
Right, and they may not even be ASHP accredited.
Yes. So it's, it's, I'm, I'm, I'll leave it at that, but just know that your, your students are out there.
I know, and I love it. So we have local, regional, and national pharmacies, and we can put everything on there. So I'll just say local. We have 986 pharmacies, and I really think this is a franchise. And it's just blowing up everywhere. I don't know if you guys noticed that, but they're everywhere. Um, one, with one corporation, they gave me 40 different pharmacies in our area of where we can place students. And they're hiring. So they're like, send us resumes, you know, we need, we need techs. Casa Colina Hospital, San Gabriel Valley Medical Center. Skilled nursing pharmacy is a closed pharmacy. Also, we have regional, we have Kaiser Permanente, I have all of Southern California. I have the contract for all of Southern California, but depending on the facility will depend on if they'll take students. It's been a little bit slow since COVID, but they actually, they want our students. They actually called me. Because I used to do it somewhere else with Kaiser. I used to have their agreement. So when they were taking students, again, they reached out to me because they wanted our students. National, we have all the CVS and all the Walgreens, which means, I don't know, there could be 40 or 50 of them in our area of each. I think in CVS, I think CVS in our area, there's at least three just in this, this area. So I don't know if you guys have any questions for me yet? Okay.
Do you want to make it now?
Thank you, Ms. Teresa. So we're going to be looking at some data.
Mr. Gomez, before you continue, we do have one comment from a member.
I just want to make a quick comment and say thank you so much for those relationships that you foster with outside agencies. We have a similar pathway on my campus, and we're trying to rebuild it because we lost our educator. And it's so hard to keep those relationships alive. So to hear that you have such a beautiful, like, partnership with different agencies, and they're still reaching out to you, I know how hard that is and how much work it takes. So kudos to you. Thank you so much. See, and this is actually one of my favorite things about being a board member is the fact that I'm able to cross over into my career as an educator and then also be a board member and build relationships with our employees. Over the past year, I've really had an amazing chance to do that and just work collaboratively. And I think that's really important, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gomez. Looking at our data, one of, one of the biggest highlights, obviously, is we're looking at data after COVID. And there was a big transition in the adult school to essentially come from COVID distance learning to actually in-person. But one thing that I want to highlight on this three-year pharmacy tech program data by age distribution is the group that we're targeting as far, that's open to all students, but the majority of the students who have enrolled are in that age group between 19 and 24 and 25 and 44. So these are essentially individuals who are either entering the workforce or have entered the workforce and might have been displaced for whatever reason, pandemic and so forth, and have gone back to school to look for alternatives, other education, other career opportunities. So really looking at, at this as an important piece that we're trying to serve, you know, all students. But this is our population that we're serving at this time. Looking at essentially our three-year pharmacy tech data by demographic, by, by city, one of the key components is we are the largest adult school on the west San Gabriel Valley. So we want to make sure that we promote our programs. A lot of, uh, adult schools shut down in the early 2010s or so and forward, but we kept our adult school. But looking at who we're serving in our, in our communities, we are serving our community students. Most of our students are coming from Almani, from Rosemead, and the South Almani. And you look at the map, you'll see essentially, uh, you know, we, we do also have students coming from all over the San Gabriel Valley and outside of the San Gabriel Valley. But our key student or population is our students from our community, from our feeder area here in the greater Almani, South Almani, Rosemead area.
I had a question on that. You mentioned that, and I think that's one of the misconceptions that's still out there that, uh, the program is only for residents of the city of Almani or the geographic boundaries which we serve. What, uh, what have we done recently? If, I know you're, you just started on the, in your position, uh, within the last couple of months. What have we done to further promote it? And what can we do if there's anything that we can do to promote it? Because I think you're right, that it's a hidden gem, but also that a lot of people have that misconception that it's only for residents, right? And so to see this map that there are people outside of our geographic area that are starting to hear about it and come to this program, um, still very small numbers, but, um, I think I'm just curious if you have any thoughts on?
And this is just for pharmacy tech in general? But our biggest thing is, is marketing. Right now, all of you guys, community members, will be receiving our newest marketing catalog that will be coming out in the next couple of weeks as a mailer. But we also not only mail within our community, we spend some good chunk of money to make sure that we kind of spread the wealth to other communities. And we do have essentially another big adult school, uh, just to the east of us, which is Hacienda La Puente. And that's essentially our competitor. So we want to make sure that we compete with the biggest and the best in this area and that our programs are up to par. So a big part of our community is essentially, uh, making sure that we have that message out and market. Also, you guys might see us, you guys, we were out there at College Night as well to promote a lot of the programs because there is a misconception that MRAS, in the past, I used to be an adult school teacher, that's where students who didn't graduate went to go and finish their high school diploma. That's one of our programs that we offer there. We offer high school diploma for all students. But a big component is, is we're really pushing our new trades programs and our CTE programs, especially for our high school students that can essentially, still don't know what their career path is and want to get into introductory courses. They could take these courses at low cost. We don't take financial aid. All our, all our programs are low cost, are free. Most of our programs are free. So it allows that student that doesn't want to dabble into maybe a community college and, and start dabbling into their, uh, financial aid, to start looking at some trades, courses, dual enrollment if needed, and kind of find their place in order for that to be a stepping stone for their career and their future. So marketing is big. We also market out a lot of our programs, particularly like ESL classes. We're out there in Almani City. So we have satellite classes that are being offered at actual, uh, uh, actual elementary sites for the community. We're trying to branch that out as well to other, other school districts as well. And we are also part of a lot of the community, uh, open houses throughout the elementary or middle schools in the city. So those are big components. And, uh, I just got a call today about an opportunity on October 8th to participate in LA County Resource Fair that's going to be taking place in, uh, uh, at South Almani Community Center, I believe, on October 8th. So we will be sending a table out there to promote our programs and our marketing there. So marketing is key for us. The video that you just seen is a brand-new video. I think it was produced, I believe, last year, uh, two years ago, coming back from COVAB. So we spent some money to provide a professional company to come out and do a marketing for our programs. It's on our website. Our website has also been revamped to make sure that, uh, we have all the information there available and the resources is available to our students. One of the things that we also did this year was the introduction of a student handbook. So we had, uh, you know, a staff handbook, but we didn't have a student handbook. So now the student handbook is there on our website. Students can look at our programs, look at what the resources are available, meet the counselors, meet the administration, and essentially, uh, have a, a description of all the programs that we offer at MRAS. So that's something new. And I thought, you know, that, that was a big component, working and coming into a new school is, how do the students know what we have? How do the students know what the rules are? How do the students know, uh, essentially what resources are there available? And especially our council staff does so much for mental health. We do so many things that, we mimic things that the high school are doing, but geared towards adults. So that's another component that we're really introducing mental health to our entire adult education.
I have a question, Mr. Gomez. So what's the maximum capacity you can take in right now?
That's an issue. We're at capacity right now. So our biggest program is ESL, uh, and those, sometimes we have waiting lists. For the most part, some programs have requirements as far as capacity. I believe pharmacy tech is 15 students, 20 students max, 20 students max per class. Uh, and those are set by the state. So we follow certain guidelines. But as far as capacity, we're at capacity right now at MRAS at our site, plus the Granada Center, which is there. And we have three sessions. So we have a morning session, we have an afternoon session, and we have an evening session. And we're discussing, um, those things right now. We, we went over our, our budget right now, and our budget is, is pretty tight this year based on what's happened at the state level. And we're looking at essentially, do we have the ability to grow? At this time right now, unless we get more funds, our ability is, uh, is, is still, uh, a little limited. We still haven't got our federal funding. We're still waiting, what we call for our WIOA funds. These are federal, uh, what we call Title I funds that are coming to the adult school. You know, talking to legislators and talking to our consortium, the funds are coming, but they're a little delayed with some federal restrictions. So we're looking at to see what those federal restrictions are and how we can allot that money. That's about 1.2 million extra dollars that we get. Most of our funding comes from CAPE, and that's about $12 million. So looking at the capacity, and most of that funding goes towards salaries, benefits. So looking at how can we maximize that? Uh, I know in the future, we're looking at essentially, uh, looking at the Rosemead Center that's being built, additional four classes that will be provided there. So we kind of look at that as a future on how we can grow as, as a school.
Mr. Gomez, could you repeat the, the name of the federal funding?
WIOA, W-I-O-A. And that's basically a federal funding that comes from the federal government.
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind, um, when you have an opportunity to follow up with, with us, send us information on any requests that we should be making to our legislators, both at the state and federal level. We travel to Washington DC on an annual basis. We visit with our state legislators virtually while the capitol's under construction. But oftentimes, we're advocating for specific bills based on the needs of, you know, the statewide organizations that are hosting these events. But oftentimes, we have the opportunity to meet with members and discuss specific requests to our district. And so if there's, um, information that you can provide, so when we meet with these members, we can tell them this is how that funding positively impacts our programming and in turn, how it positively impacts our students and residents as well. Uh, you know, the more information we can share with them, tangible information, student success stories, limitations that we face, the, the better. Because that way, they, they see the direct effects of that funding, you know? And sometimes it's as simple, it's as simple as, you know, perhaps less restrictions on existing funding would go a long way, never mind providing additional funding. So just putting that out there for you and the rest of the staff at MRAS.
Definitely. And one of our students that will be speaking today is actually Maria del Carmen Perez, who'll be talking a little bit, but she actually wrote a letter to Governor Newsom, really talking about the protection of the WIO during the summer funds, because that was a talk that the federal government might cut WIO altogether. That changed over the timeframe of July 1st to, to recently. So at this time right now, we know the funding's coming. We're waiting for our award letter. Uh, and we're looking at the end of September to get that funding. But these are topics that are definitely of importance to us, and we'll be reaching out to you and the board.
Thank you.
Last table here, we're talking about demographics by ethnicity. Majority of our students that are coming from, from essentially into MRAS for this particular program are predominantly Asian and Hispanic, which is predominantly the makeup of, of, of our community here in Almani, Rosemead, and South Almani. This is some of the program data that we have here. Class of 2223, this is like the first year after, uh, year two after coming back from cohort. We had about 17 cohort students. The way the cohorts work is we look essentially at students who have been completing courses, some of those prerequisites, and those who get through their prerequisites, then they get into the cohort program where we kind of group students together and kind of pace them through the, the 18-week, uh, program that we have. So in 2223, we had 17 cohort students. 10 of those students, uh, completed their externships. And the thing with externships is that they're not through just a one-year cycle. Sometimes those externships, life happens for adult students. So sometimes they'll carry that externship, uh, over. So the data gets a little tricky because we're dealing with business cycles. July 1st is our business cycle. So the data either goes from one, one cycle to the other. So trying to put some of this data together was a little difficult just based on how, uh, students start and end. But class of 2023, 24, we had 24 students in that cohort. 17 of those students completed externships. And you see, you know, after COVID, more and more students, uh, essentially joining the program. 19 students passed a certification examination. And if you don't pass the certification 19 students passed the certification examination. And if you don't pass the certification examination, you still have the opportunity to retake. So there's multiple opportunities. So it's not the last time. And then we've provide, you know, tutoring back at MRAS for those students that didn't pass. And we're able to provide modules for them, for them to study and prepare for the examination. Unfortunately, the exam is changing. It changed as of July 1st. So there's version 3.0 of this year. We're already essentially preparing our students for version 3.0. And as you see at the last class that we had, we had a cohort of 28 students. So the program is growing. 25 of those students had externships and 13 of those students passed their certification on, on the first time. So beginning July 1st, we'll have the 2025 version was implemented, which is the 3.0 version. And this is what students will be tested on as we move forward.
I have a question regarding the, the support you provide to students that don't pass on the first, the first time. You mentioned that there's some tutoring and some additional supports that go into helping those students try to, is that additional cost to them or is that already included?
Yeah, it's all embedded essentially. The costs are what you see on those flyers, specific for specific items. But as far as any type of ongoing tutoring, that's all provided. We do have a career center at, at MRAS that students can access. They can write resumes there. They could study there. So we have essentially that opportunity for students to come either morning, afternoon, or in the evening. Touch base with Miss Atchison also teaches, you know, at three different times throughout the day. So those opportunities are there for all students.
Thank you.
And when the students talk, they'll give you a little experience of what their experience was in the program and, and, and what they've accomplished. Looking at the Bureau Labor Statistics, bringing in some national information. California is very expensive to live in. So most individuals who get a pharmacy tech program certification here in California, they're within the 75%, 90% range. Mostly the other ranges are for other states. If you look at the states with the highest employment for pharmacy aides, California is number one. Over 9,430 pharmacy techs and they're still hiring. Another thing is we live in Los Angeles County, which Los Angeles County is the largest metropolitan area in the state of California that's hiring pharmacy tech. So essentially it's accessible to all our students here in the community. So really proud that we're centered here in LA County. Our biggest competition is LA City, so LA Unified. So these are essentially the adult schools that were competing for national recognition here in the state. Okay, so that kind of ends the instructional report. At this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Teresa Atchison again. She will be introducing her pharmacy tech students. And then I'll also like to introduce Ms. Susanti Kay Lee, who's going to be, is one of our ESL high school diploma students, CTE and medical students. So before, at the end, when Susanti comes up, I'll be sharing a, a specific poem that Ms. Susanti created. And then actually made that poem into a song using some of the AI software that's out there available. But essentially was, has been gracious enough to share that with us. And we've been able to share with our staff and our staff has been very grateful to Susanti for what she's provided. And that will be how we end our presentation. So at this time, I'll introduce Ms. Teresa to introduce her, her two students from pharmacy tech.
Thank you. I would like to call Matthew Santiago.
Hello, everybody. My name is Matthew Santiago. And yes, I was a student here at El Monte Rosemeat Adult School. Sorry. Oh, awesome. So sorry about that. Thank you, thank you. Yes, I came to this district right after I graduated high school. Prior to finding out about El Monte, I was about to go into a private institution for pharmacy tech. That was about $20,000. I was about to start sessions within July. But my mom was able to find a flyer for El Monte, surprisingly 90 bucks to register and join in. So I said, all right. And it was also two days after my birthday as well. So June 12th was when the classes started on a Monday, two days before was my birthday. I came in right in, right when I turned 18. So I joined the program, right, as an 18-year-old. I came here with the goal to help out my family. They've gone through a lot, raising me and my brother. Especially for my mom, she went through a, a difficult divorce. And so she was taking care of a house on her own with her, um, just help from my own grandpa, from her retirement funds and then my uncle working at a restaurant. But she worked as a pharmacy tech as well. So I saw that as an opportunity, hey, if my mom can do this and push herself toward her limits as a pharmacy tech, why can't I? So I decided, this is my goal. I wanted to support my family this way. I met many great students and teachers and staff at El Monte. They helped a lot in creating this environment for me to really like, to really learn. They helped me understand adult life. Many of them were 20, 30s. They're fam, um, they're family, um, they're people, they're, um, they're grownups, they have kids, they support other people as well. I was able to get insight on at least an idea of how I wanted to grow up as an adult. Because I came from high school, there's no exact idea of how I wanted to be as an adult. But many of the teachers and staff there and as well as the classmates helped me grow into a better individual. Before they had the state of the art pharmacy tech, you can see they had the, um, the whole outpatient setup and everything. It was just a classroom and a tiny other room with a couple of medications and then plastic barriers for IV labs. But still, despite all that, Ms. Atchison was able to really help out a lot in bringing in like the imagination of like, this is a pharmacy setting here. So the labs were my favorite part of the education there at El Monte. Once I finished my, um, um, education course, the, um, the, the whole 40, 420 hours for, um, for our program, for, for going into externships, I immediately went into the NHA exam. Retaining all the knowledge that I've learned from my teacher and the labs, I'm going in and passing right under a month after graduating from the class, being able to open myself up to doing the externships right after. I first started in Casa Colina, which was one of the options shown on the screen over there is an inpatient pharmacy. I was able to work there for three weeks. But while I was also working out there, going, um, once a week, visiting my teacher, checking up with their schedules and everything, she mentioned that they had connections to Kaiser. And I knew immediately that is what I wanted to get into. No matter if it was such a steep hill for me to climb, I wanted to get there. So I told her about wanting to, I was very interested. No matter how long it took for me to get there, I would make myself get there. So she, she did so much, she had, I, I can't even comprehend like the type of connections and the type of like effort she had to put in to get me into the Kaiser program. Took a couple of months. I finished my first externship and it was about two to three months, I believe, before I even got to start as an outpatient at Kaiser Fontana, Kaiser Fontana Medical Center. Over there, they allowed me the opportunity to work with them as an outpatient pharmacy tech. There I met many people, pharmacists, the managers themselves. I did my best to like communicate and take as much as I can over there. They were very great teachers. And not only just the outpatient, she also got me into the home infusion inpatient pharmacy for Kaiser all over there in Fontana as well. So I was able to do not only two externships, three externships, two for Kaiser. And so I was able to end my externship years with 360, I think 360 hours of externships, three weeks in each program, getting my inpatients, my home infusion inpatient and outpatient pharmacy technology. Once I graduated, I started applying immediately. I got to get many information from the Kaiser employees themselves about how to apply in. Because they do take in Kaiser employees first, then the outside people as well after. I applied to many of the different Kaiser locations. I was actually able to interview one in Orange County, but I didn't get the, um, I didn't get, I did the interview, but they didn't get me in. But I was able to interview at a couple more places. One actually in Temecula, and that was my first inpatient job. That took me about till September to get in. So about three months. But as during that time, I really, really wanted to get into the home infusion inpatient pharmacy. The culture and the environment they offered me there as the three weeks was so warming and like, they're very kind people, very knowledgeable people. They challenged me in my knowledge as a pharmacy tech. The managers there knew I was curious. I always loved taking notes and came in early, I came in late and they saw that. And then they would always ask me questions about medications and about like how the process and mainly why we become, why are we doing this as pharmacy techs? Not the house, not how we deliver the medications to patient, but why do we deliver the medications to the patient? Why are we here helping them out here? And I got to learn a lot about that when, let's say around October, I've been applying to this place. Around this time, this was my third time applying and I was finally able to get my interview. Took me till October to finally get an interview at the home infusion inpatient pharmacy at Kaiser. And despite being really nervous, I was confident. I, I was with them despite it being probably like four months or five months from the last time I got to see them. I knew them. I learned under them. They trained me. They understood me as a person. So I came into the interview as confident as I can be. And I'm very, very proud to say that. I am currently working there as a, as a home infusion inpatient tech. Yes. I've been with them since December and currently it's been eight months since I've been with them. And I've only gone to know them more as people and as a team. So I can, I can't thank Ms. Atchison enough for her wonderful support getting me there. And MRAS for allowing me to take this program over here. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew, for, for sharing your story with us.
What he didn't tell you was that before he even went to externship, he took his nationals and passed before the other students. So the other students were waiting, you know, and he's like, oh, he just took it, he passed. And so he was very employable once he was done. So I'm very proud of him. And when you got hired at Kaiser, were you 19?
Yes, I was, I was 19 years old.
Wow.
The youngest member of the, in the.
We probably can't tell you the exact figure, but he makes almost 30 bucks an hour, Monday through Friday, day job. Thank you so much, Matthew. So now I'd like to introduce Maria Del Carmen Perez.
Trustees, good evening and thank you for affording me this opportunity to speak to each and every one of you and the audience. 27 years ago, when this program came out, I wanted to take it. But at the time, my husband had come home from Vietnam. He was a Navy SEAL. And I was, we were starting a family and I was working full-time in the daytime. I couldn't take the program because it was offered in the daytime. And I discussed it with him. I said, what if I stop working? But then when I saw what the program cost, back then it was about $12,000. There was no way that we could pull it off. So years went by, I continued working and God bless me. I was working for Watts Health Corporation and they lost two major grants. They laid off 40 of us. I was number 20. The other people had more than 15 years in. I didn't even have a full year. Well, I received a letter to go register for unemployment. This is the first time in my life that I ever collected unemployment. I would leave a job or was laid off, I found another one immediately. So they asked me, would you like to go back to work with the state? I used to work with Department of Corrections and I said, no. And they laughed. They said, would you like retraining through that program that? And I said, can I? Without my education? He said, let's see. So we filled out all the forms and he said, why would you like to switch right now? I am a nurse. 80% of my family are in the medical field. And I said, you know how hard it is when you bond with people and they die? I said, I've done subacute hospice psychiatric. I said, I need a break. I was approved for the program and I looked at five different adult schools, even the one in my backyard, Peak Rivera, our Rancho Unified Adult School. I looked at the curriculum. I went and visited the campuses. What impresses me the most is the technology. I called this campus and a really nice lady named Elizabeth would answer. And I knew she had a smile when she answered the phone. And she answered all my questions and she would always say, we would love to have you. When I went on campus, I met Maribel. She's in the front counter when you walk in. She guides the students. She registers the students. We welcome you. We would love to have you. I didn't get that from any of the other four campuses. And when I looked at the campuses, they were run down. El Monte Rosemeat Adult School is beautiful. They keep it up. It's clean. And the environment is, come on, we want you here. What I love about the campus, it reminds me of Cal State LA. Multilingual, multicultural, multi-ethnic, and everyone's there because they want to be there. Nobody is forcing them to go. I enjoyed the atmosphere of the classroom. 17 of us started, 17 of us finished. We were a cohesive group. We supported each other. Sometimes when some of them had doubts, and I discussed this with Mrs. Atchison, I sat down and I talked to them. I said, I know what you're going through. You think this is easy for me? No, this is something new, but it's something I always wanted to learn. Let's stick together. So early in the morning, when I would arrive, some of them would be scratching their head. I'd say, what's wrong? So I would give them tips on how to study. I would offer to help them. We all helped each other in one way or another. What I found the most challenging and I really disliked was the math. I'm not kidding you. I thought nursing math was bad. This is worse. You had to do conversions four steps. And if you messed up on one step, even though you did the rest of it right, it was wrong. And I would ask Mrs. Atchison, why do I have to go through this? And now I remember I looked at a problem and I already knew the answer. Armida, another lady that sat next to me, she goes, how do you know that's the answer? I said, Armida, if I had to do combinations every time I did med pass, I would never finish my med pass. You learn how to calculate it fast in your head. But the complicated ones, when you had to go from grams to metric, from metric to something else, I said, this is insane. But I did get five problems on my state exam. Three of them I knew off the top of my head. The other two, I had to use a little computer that's on the monitor. And I remember after taking the exam, Mrs. Atchison asked me, how did you do? I said, I haven't looked. Why? I said, I don't think I passed. So Armida says, come on, let's get on the computer. He says, if you didn't pass, it's tell you big red letters, you did not pass. So we get on it and it says, congratulations in small letters, you passed. But let me tell you about El Monte Rosemeat Adult School. In the time that I've been there, I've seen Mr. Diaz do fundraisers, writing pins, different kind of writing pins. Easter time, milk, chocolate, eggs. I love chocolate. They sell T-shirts. The best part that I liked was when they had the book fair. I have 12 grandchildren and 14 great grandchildren. I gave everybody a list. I said, at my school, they're selling books. What do you like? I spent over $200 at the book fair. And when I went home with the bags, everybody was excited because they got what they wanted. I promote education all the time wherever I go. The biggest reward for me was before we started our externship, Mr. Diaz came into the room with these large envelopes. And the envelopes were certificates for three students and a letter saying you've been awarded a hundred dollar scholarship. I was so excited to have seen that, all the fundraising activities that they have at El Monte Rosemeat Adult School. And I was able to see students in my class get those awards, those scholarships. That I, I'm not good. That I, I'm not good with the cell phone, but I got out my cell phone. I said, I know how to take pictures. Let me take your picture with the certificate. And then I had Ms. Aitchison get next to them. Then I went to Walgreens and I did the prints. I gave some to her. I gave all the students prints and I said, congratulations. And I gave them a card too, also congratulating them. It felt so good to see that all the contributions that many of us in the class participated in. I got to see the result, people getting scholarships. I, um, I was told, uh, by the last case manager that I have at the Rio Hondo American Job Career Center that they were watching me closely. They said that I was the first person that they have that asked to take the pharmacy technician program. And that this school, Almani Rosemead Adult School, was the first time they've ever used the campus. And every time I went to check in and speak to them and they asked me how was it going? And I would tell them, we're doing, we're mixing things right now. We're compounding. It's like when you're making a cake, you look at the recipe and you follow the instructions. I said, I love it. I would like to know, learn how to mix the solutions for cancer patients. I like it all. When I did my externship at CVS, I did everything. They allowed me to do everything and I loved it. They did not live, limit me. I was able to greet the public, pull medications, get on the phone. I had a technician says, you know how to read Spanish? I go, yeah, why? They put in an order in Spanish and I told her, oh, I read it to her and she thanked me. Then I found out that that technician was from Thailand and in her country she was a pharmacist. But when she came to the United States, she had to go to school and she passed the pharmacy technician exam. And I told her, why don't you go and get your pharmacist here? I told her, take your time. You already know what you're doing. You just have to pass our test and have the classes that will allow you to take the test. So she's going back to school here to be a pharmacist in the United States. I love Almani Rosemead Adult School. I am walking advertisement at, um, American Job Career Center. They've told me that some of the employees there have sent their kids to school here to be pharmacy technicians because they were so impressed. Every time I went in, I would tell them, this is what I'm doing now. And this is a growing field. We have, um, the baby boomers like myself who are living longer. With the new technologies and, uh, medical field medications, people are living, living longer. So it makes sense that with the longevity that we have in the United States, that we need more pharmacy technicians. I was impressed when Walgreens managers came and spoke to us in the class. I was impressed when we met other people who are pharmacy techs and have gotten very high up in Kaiser. And they were able to explain how you could go into management. There's many facets in this field. If you get tired of doing pharmacy, you could do closed pharmacy, work in a warehouse, go to a hospital, many different specializations in hospitals. I've enjoyed it. Um, I enjoy this change in my career and everybody in my family has been following me. Um, one of my granddaughters works at Balfour Police Q. And, uh, her supervisor asked her, the owner, what is your nana doing? She goes, oh, she just got her license for pharmacy technician. And he said, really now? So then they started asking her about the program. Why are you going to school? A lot of my professional friends asked me, what are you doing now? I said, I'm going to school for pharmacy tech. Where I said, Almani, and the reaction was, what? I said, hey, Almani isn't what you think it is. I go, go to the campus and look at it like I did. I went to five campuses, five adult schools, and this is the one I selected. I did my research and many people agree with me. Many people are now, and even in my family, are going to go to Almani Rosemead Adult School. I am walking advertisement for all of you. And I want to thank each and every one of you for being so supportive. Um, I do write, I'm a writer, I'm very politically involved. Senator Bob Archuleta from Peak Rivera, I know Bob very well. Gloria Molina, who passed away, um, she's also from Peak Rivera. Her family's still there. Grace Napoletano, also from Peak Rivera, Congresswoman who just retired. I know all of them. There was a time in my life that I worked 13 years labor relations in Sacramento. I can tell you just my personal opinion, which governors I like and which I do not like. But one thing I will tell you, politicians have no idea what's going on unless you write to them. So when I finished the course, I had already for some time been drafting the letter that I was going to say, send to Gavin Newsom, thanking him for the monies that go to the programs with EDD. And I also made Nancy Farius aware of concerns that I had with her program and also made recommendations how there could be improvements made. Uh, I took it even a step further and sent a letter here to the district. Because I wanted the district to know what was going on with Almani Rosemead Adult School. You don't have any ideas what goes on. You only hear complaints all the time. So when I write, I sit down and I take my time. And I'm still writing to, uh, Gavin Newsom for more money for education. When Arnold Schwarzenegger was in office, I'll tell you, I'm a Democrat. I'm not a Republican, but I liked him because he's a human, uh, he's a humanitarian. And every time I wrote him a letter for money, he would find the money. So did Jerry Brown. I know Jerry Brown. Jerry Brown used to party here in Almani back in the day. I won't tell you the nickname we had for him because I'd be recorded. I want to keep his image clean, but he was a cutie pie when he was young. Um, Arnold Schwarzenegger, when I would write him for money, I would always put at the end of my letter, remember that it was a teacher who taught you how to read. And because that teacher taught you how to read, look where you are today. And when I put that in certain letters, that last phrase, he didn't write back. And now I probably hit a nerve with him. But he is a humanitarian. I happened to be on a committee with him years ago. The first, he was our executive director for the Los Angeles First Inner City Games. Politicians will give you money, but you have to tell them why you want it and how the public will benefit. And I'm still writing to Gavin Newsom and other people that I know in Sacramento. Uh, I support you and I'm glad that all of you support these people right here. They're doing a fantastic job.
Thank you. Before we continue, I do want to make one quick comment, um, to Mrs. Perez. Just a, a comment to, uh, two things. One, uh, when you were talking about your, your fellow student who you encouraged to return to pharmacy school, who was from Thailand, who had that experience, I'd say thank you because oftentimes we don't hear that from people. I'm sure there are many individuals who share that same sentiment and maybe encourage folks or, or think about encouraging, encouraging them. And I'm glad that you shared that story because programs like this are wonderful, but this is often a stepping stone to something else as well. And for someone who came from another country, who has that experience, who doesn't have the license here, to be encouraged by someone to say, hey, don't just stop here. You know what you're doing. All you have to do is get the hours and take the exam and you can do the exact same job you were already doing.
Let me share something with you. I had the pleasure in the class that I finished with Mrs. Aitchison. There were three students in there who went through the ESL program, program at Almani Rosemead Adult School and transitioned into the pharmacy tech program. And I thought that was awesome. Because I also shared with them, my father-in-law, the company he worked for in Alserino moved to Tijuana. And he looked very depressed and I asked him, what's wrong? He says, well, my unemployment will recover the groceries. And he had a rent to pay. And I said, well, what's the problem with you getting a job? He was 62. He said, I'm illiterate. My husband and my brother-in-laws had no idea that their father could not read or write. So I told him in Spanish, you're going to get up in the morning. You're going to walk down Passant's Boulevard. When you get to the high school, everybody there speaks Spanish. You tell them that you're going to go to school day and night. I will support you. I took him dictionaries, bilingual dictionaries. I took him paper, pencils. And then to everybody's shock, and my husband says, I don't know how you did it. My father-in-law, according to my mother-in-law, got up, walked a quarter of a mile to the high school, registered for ESL day and night. And within one month, he went from kindergarten to fifth grade reading and they gave him a special certificate. They said that in the history of the district, no one had ever done that at the Rancho Unified School District Adult School. I have always promoted education. I loved it when I went in the mornings to Almani, uh, Rosemead Adult School. A lot of the Asian women, they thought I was Filipino. I said, no. They thought I was part Chinese, part American. I said, no. I said, but it's a pleasure to meet you. So I made an appointment every morning. I would say Maria because I had trouble saying Maria. But I made it a point to memorize their names. So every morning where I, I arrived to school, because I always arrived early, I would go. So then I got to the point, because I know a lot of Asian people don't like to be touched. I go, can I give you hug? hug them. It got to the point that I told them, what are you going to do when you finish your English? They said, what are you doing? I said, I'm in this program pharmacy tech. Come on, let me show you. I take the elevator up. I show them around. I go, think about it. I was impressed that at that school, you have all ages, all multilingual, multicultural, multi-ethnic, and we all get along really well. My biggest thrill was when they had a, a student recognition day and they gave us hot dogs, chips and sodas. And different students got up there to sing songs from their country. Just do some kind of entertainment. That was so beautiful, the cohesiveness of the campus. I have not seen that anywhere else. And I've been on many campuses throughout my lifetime. I love that campus. I, I'm walking advertisement for all of you and thank you.
Thank you. And my last comment that I wanted to share, and, and you've, you, uh, said this multiple times, that you're a walking advertisement. I'm going to hold you to that. Uh, Mr. Gomez and the rest of the MRAS staff, we definitely need to highlight our students. And, you know, not only to promote our programs, but specifically, and I mentioned this earlier, when we go and make those requests for funding, I think you're the perfect example of who should be meeting with some of these individuals on our behalf with our staff so that they know this is somebody who has directly benefited from an adult education program here, the Almani Rosemead Adult School. And you can share your experience and very obviously you can articulate not only the benefit, but also the need to provide additional funding. And more importantly, unrestricted funding for the adult education programs here. So thank you so much. Thank you, Matthew, for being here as well. Thank you, uh, Maria, for speaking with us. And I think you have one more speaker today, but thank you for the two of you so far.
All right. So, uh, we'd like to introduce now our, our student, Susanti Kay Lee. And she'll be coming up and giving, uh, she's a current student. She's gone through our ESL program, our high school diploma program. And she's currently in our CTE medical program. But along that, I'm going to be providing you with the lyrics to essentially a poem that she wrote about the Almani Rosemead Adult School. And then she took the opportunity with technology and incorporated an AI program to essentially, uh, convert this poem into music. And you guys will be surprised to what came out of it. It's a very touching, uh, song. So I want you guys to look at the lyrics because the lyrics themselves speak volumes of what our students are going through and what they think about the adult school.
Thank you and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Susanti Kusumali and I'm from Indonesia.
Yeah.
Um, I've, uh, I'm an MRAS student and I have been there for two years. The first program I took was ESL program and starting from level three. This May, I graduate, uh, I, I finished my ESL program. During the summer, I took adult basic English class and distant learning program. And now I'm working on my, um, high school diploma and two CTE programs, personal care aid and medical terminology. Tonight, I want to share my experience studying at MRAS. When I first stepped, uh, into MRAS, I feel like a baby bird just born from eight eggs. Um, I didn't know any English and I didn't know, didn't know, uh, the culture here. In class, I met friends from different country. Uh, and being in the, in this environment, um, left me no choice, um, but to speak English since no one spoke my first language. I like the learning, uh, environment in the ESL program there. The teacher explained, uh, very clearly, step by step, uh, so it's, uh, easy to follow and understand. We were taught, uh, to write, read, speak and listen to English. This really helped me understand English in the United States. When I was in the basic English class, I could feel a big difference compared to the ESL class. In this class, uh, the teacher taught us how important it is to be on time. Uh, we learn how to dress properly, uh, being polite, um, follow all the rules and, uh, take, uh, responsibility for our assignment. The teacher got us ready, uh, the teacher got us ready for job. When I was in a, when I was took CTE programs, um, I feel like, you know, uh, I was being teaching by, by a doctor. The teachers are very smart and talented. So I can use what I learned in the class right away and, uh, uh, I, I can use what I learned in the class right away. Uh, I, I feel really cool. MRAS is not just a school, uh, with a great learning facilities. It's also supported by amazing humble leaders, kind teachers and, and friendly staff with a good ethic. They set a great example. Every time I arrive at the lobby and, uh, had to class, the leader, the teacher, the staff greet me with a warm smile. This is making me feel like I'm coming home to my family. MRAS is full of a positive energy. In my whole life, I never seen a school like this. It has a great facilities, professional teachers and humble leaders. I call it a five star school. I believe at work, uh, people don't just look at your skill, but also your attitude. At this school, I didn't just gain a skill. I also learned how to be person with a good attitude. I'm not that baby bird anymore. Now I can, uh, spread my wings and fly. And I'm sure one day I shore hike, cross ocean and, and reach my dream. Never stopped doing a little things or other. Sometimes those little things occupied the biggest part of their hearts. Thank you, MRAS. Thank you all leader, teacher and staff. Thank you.
Okay, we will conclude with her song. So, uh, everybody has lyrics and the lyrics are also on the slide. So everybody has lyrics, and the lyrics are also on the slide.
Thank you, MRAS, for lifting us high. From zero to hero, you taught us to flow. With every lesson, you help us believe. Our dreams are in reach. We'll achieve, we'll achieve. Thank you, MRAS, your name will raise. A shining future will honor your praise. MRAS, our guide, our light, our home. Together we grow. We're never alone. With gratitude deep, your name will sing. Thank you, MRAS, for everything.
So the song is called Everlasting Gratitude. And we want to thank Susanti. We've shared this with our entire staff. It's a great song, so we want to thank, the words themselves are so powerful that everybody was moved because of this. So thank you, and we want her to continue at MRAS and all her success. Thank you.
Thank you. This was beautiful. I actually was getting a little emotional listening to it. And all I could think of is this is, this is an anthem that will play at every MRAS graduation from here to the end of time. Because I think this definitely encapsulates what it is, what it means to be a student at MRAS, what it means to have that wonderful campus, that hidden gem. And I encourage everyone here, our students, our faculty, our administration, to share and spread the word about MRAS. I've talked about this before, and it's definitely that hidden gem. And I think we need to do more to promote it. I know that we're currently at capacity. And I'm looking forward to the Rosemead site reopening next year, so that we can expand capacity there and go beyond what we serve and who we serve now. So thank you to all of you for being here with us tonight. Does that conclude your presentation?
That does conclude our presentation for tonight.
I will open it up to questions or comments from my colleagues. I'll start with Mr. Nguyen. Actually, let me stop there. I'll start with our student trustees, if you have any comments or questions before I go on to the board of trustees. If you have any comments or questions.
I have a comment. The song was really great and beautiful. It's something that I feel like a lot of our educational institutions should also have. Because from a student's point of view, and how like she viewed learning English these past two years, it's just beautiful to see what she got out of it, and how they said that they'll always like honor to the name of MRAS, and it's just so cool to see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to agree with promoting this more, because I have friends who are interested in like the pharmacy field, but are unsure of like how to get there and what steps they need to take. So I think this is like a great way to promote more into our high schools as like an option instead of like jumping into college.
I do have a question, though. I know that, I know some people that have special needs, but have also attended college too and got a degree, but are trying to find a job currently, but it's kind of hard to job hunt due to their special needs. But would they be able to come to MRAS as well?
Yes, we take, we take all students. We have a different variety of support for all students.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you both. Is that, if that concludes your comments, and we'll move on to trustee Nguyen.
Thank you very much for your presentation. You know, MRAS is my favorite school. I always support 110,000%. You know, you have transformed so many lives. You know, like some of the career that you offer right here is AI-proof. AI-proof. I mean, I underline AI-proof. I think AI won't replace philanthropy or all of sin with AI-proof. You have a job for good. We sign like President Breonna say, it's just a stepping stone. I heard people graduated from Pham Tech and become a registered nurse, certified registered anesthetist nurse, and also become a dentist, or pharmacist, or doctor, because they fell in love with the medical field when they interact. And thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. And I, you know, it's the pillar, it's the gem in San Gabriel City. And I always, you know, my most favorite place to be. Feel welcoming, see diversity in the world. Harmony, diversity, and that's what I see in MRAS. And it is a beautiful place to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Thank you, trustee Nguyen.
That's it, that's.
Thank you. Trustee Padilla.
Absolutely. Matthew Santiago, Maria del Carmen Perez, and Susanti Kay Lee. You are my why. You, you are my why of what I do, what I do. When I listen to your stories, it just, it hits me at my, at my heart, and it reminds me of when you can get a second chance when something bad happens in your life, Ms. Perez, that you didn't give up and you had somewhere to go to. And yes, exactly the story that you shared today, I've known that for so many years. You know, as the senior board member on this dais, I can speak to history of El Monte Rosemead Adult School. At one point, we were deficit spending by $1 million. And Ms. Annette Felix has been around long enough to know this story. We were one of the districts that despite the fact that we were deficit spending by $1 million, we made the very smart decision not to shut our doors. When neighboring districts around this San Gabriel Valley, they shut their doors. And that was one of the stupidest things they could ever do, because they got shut down, and many people lost their job. And Ms. Annette Felix can attest to all this. She would have lost her job as well. But not in El Monte Rosemead Adult School, because we knew how awesome this place is from the stories that you have shared with us today, and the resiliency of Mr. Santiago. Talk about not giving up and that whole trajectory that you had. You know, kudos to you for, you knew what you wanted, and you went and you got it, and nothing was gonna get in your way. And for Ms. Perez, for being the, the human walking advertisement for MRAS, thank you for doing that. And to Susanti, as an immigrant, I can relate to you. I was not born in this country. And with the right support, you know, I am where I am because of hard work, of people that supported me around my community in many, in many districts. You know, I'm a product of this district. And I have to thank Carrie Froeg. For the longest time, you know, you've held the fort there. Where are you, Carrie? Thank you so much for holding it down. Yes, give her a big round of applause. You know, yeah, to Susanti, yes. Carrie, thank you so much for holding the fort. I'm really glad that we now have Assistant Principal, Mr. Oscar Gomez, that has history with the Almani Rosemead Adult School. I have been the board member that has been very critical when they dump administrators there, when they're clueless about adult education. And that has happened in El Monte Rosemead Adult School. So when we had, you know, Dr. Kerr, and then we had you, somebody who understands it, I'm truly grateful for that. But I'm also truly grateful of the relationships that I had for many, 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 many years. Paul Diaz, I cannot say enough things about you. You know, having gone to school with you and doing our master's degree many, many, many years ago, I know the type of person that you are. And what Ms. Perez said today, she encapsulated everything of the person that you are. You just sit there quietly in the background, but you do all the dirty work, but you don't like to come to the front. So tonight, I don't care, I'm putting you in the front. And I want to acknowledge the work that you do, Paul Diaz. To Lisa Ton, she's been an employee in our district for many years. I've known Lisa even when she worked with the WEOA. They keep changing that. It just means Workforce Investment Act. That's the funding.
Correct.
They changed the name. Lisa Ton has been around helping our youth and giving jobs to them. And used to play so many of those kids in my school, at New Lexington School. Then she moved on, and she became an employee of Mountain View High School. She was a comprehensive student support coordinator, an outreach consultant, as we used to call it. And then she moved into that position, and it has been amazing. That program kicks butt. And the person that said about the front line when you call, Ms. Perez, absolutely, when you call that place, and I've said this to Dr. Zuniga. Dr. Zuniga, I told you, I want you to make a phone call and let them know that I called, even as a board member, I called and I said, tell me about the construction program. I want to know every little detail about it. And the young man who answered the phone over there, it was a young man in my, in my instance. He said, you know, Mr. Padilla, I don't know all the answers, but I'm gonna go get the answers, or I'm gonna get the catalog, and we can look at it together. What's that young man's name?
Aaron Blankenbaker.
Okay, that young man stuck with me, same experience that Ms. Perez has. So I want you to know, the same treatment that you get is the same treatment that I get. And that's what I expect from our employees. And about our facilities not being run down, you're absolutely right. We upkeep our facility very much. Even when it was deficit spending, we made sure that we took the $1 million from our general fund to ensure that we continue to have that gem in, in our school district. Carrie, I got you. Lisa, I got you. Annette Felix, I got you. Ms. Teresa Aitchison, thank you so much for what you do, and for all that networking and all those relationships, because those relationships make a big difference. It just takes a phone call from you. You're highly respected in that field, and they don't have to like, you know, search you or see if you're credible or not. You already have that credibility with your 40-plus years of experience. So I'm glad that we have you at the Almani Rosemead Adult School advocating and working for our kids. About the financial aid, that is critical, okay? Yes, there's a lot of schools for profit. That's like $30,000, $40,000. And I know how they work, because I've worked with students that are caught up in that mess. They make you apply for financial aid. You get the Pell Grant, that's not enough to pay their program. They make you take out a student loan, and then you're stuck with a huge student loan. I tried to help students try to get out of that, but they feed on our communities. They're like predatory nonprofit adult schools. I know that firsthand. And that's why we need to be educated with people like you guys, to tell our kids, don't fall into that stupid trap. Go and take this, you know, pharmacy technician program at Almani Rosemead Adult School, where it's only gonna cost you $700, and not $25,000 or $20,000. And then you're already in debt, and you're not, you're not starting from zero. You're starting from a negative $20,000, and you have to figure out how to pay that back. Every program that's there, ESL, construction, I'm so glad that you have the emergency technician, the emergency medical technician program that has come back. I loved it. You had it many years ago when I was 18. How do I know? Because before I figured out what I wanted to do, like so many young people, like you didn't know how to be an adult, right? Same thing for me, Santiago. I did not know, or Matthew, not Santiago, Santiago is your last name. I did not know how to be an adult or what to do. So what do I do? I went, graduated from Rosemead, and I'm like, let me go to Almani Rosemead Adult School. And I couldn't figure out what I wanted to be. So I became a medical assistant, I became a certified nurse assistant, I became an emergency medical technician, I became a home health aide, all at Almani Adult School for free. And then I said, you know, I don't think I can handle the blood. I did an internship at St. Luke's Hospital, and I'm like, the hell with this. I'm out of here. I don't want no blood. On a Friday night with all the drive-by shootings and stuff that I used to get, I'm out of here. I became an educator. And 34 years later, I love what I do. But I would be remiss, and I will end with this. I gotta give credit where credit is due. There's a board member there, the Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. She was a board member here on our board. She helped me save the Almani Rosemead Adult School when we were deficit spending. So Professor Stella Torres de Seigres, I like, I like to give credit where credit is due. And I give you all the praise and everything, all the support, and all the accolades, because if you had not supported Almani Rosemead Adult School, we would have ended that program, and you three students would not be here tonight. So thank you, Professor Stella Torres de Seigres. Yes. And lastly, I know I would end with that, but thank you for having babysitting. I remember as a young kid, when my father was taking classes in ESL, English as a Second Language, and they told my father, señor, no puede traer a su hijo. Aquí no hay niños, nomás pueden ser adultos. Mr. Padilla, you cannot bring your child here. It's only for adults. What a sad time at that time, but they didn't realize the power of babysitting. As a board member, I made sure that we funded babysitting for so many of our students in order to get, you know, that new career and to have a chance at the American dream. So it is a hidden jewel for some people. But for some of us, we know what you guys do, and I take my hat off to you. It is one special place, and I know that it will only get better now that we have Assistant Principal, Mr. Oscar Gomez. So congratulations to you, to your team, to your students, to your teachers. My hat goes off to you. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And just closing remarks, we provided advertisement information for MRAS for all of the board members and all the cabinet members.
I will be advertising.
And thank you, Mr. Padilla, for advertising for us. Thank you.
Dr. Galvez.
I just want to say thank you to everyone for their presentation tonight. You guys did an amazing job. I am super impressed by the adult school. Last year, when I attended the graduations for both the events, it was phenomenal. I think we do our program really well here, and that's thanks to the work of all of you. At the end of my school year last year, I had two students who graduated. I work somewhere, you know, not that far away. I always say that I work on the other side of the freeway. I sent two kiddos over to the ESL program, because they had moved to this area, and they're registered and they're attending our ESL classes. And I'm just very impressed by the work that you guys do, and all the opportunities that we provide for people within our communities. So thank you, and to our speakers tonight, thank you so much for getting up here and for also like staying this late to speak with us. We really, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Galvez. Dr. Guzman.
Yeah, I just wanna, I wanna repeat everything that's already been said. I will say that I'm particularly impressed by just how much you go above and beyond, not in every aspect, right? Even the little small details, and sometimes those details matter a lot to students. So that simple phone call, I know we've said it already here on the board tonight, that welcoming, friendly environment, the clean campus, but also the classrooms themselves. Because like, I think you were, you were sharing that about the classroom when you first started, and it was kind of bare. But just how much has, investment has gone into the classrooms to make them, you know, state of the art, and really encourages our students, and lets them know that we are fully invested in them as adult learners. And so I just want to really And so I just wanna really congratulate all the work that's already been done. Um, Ms. Aitchison, especially your work. Um, I know it can't be said enough tonight of all the work you put into. And it's clear by the testimonies tonight of how impactful your work is. Um, but also I think kudos in general to that vision of training our students for, um, like Mr. Noyan said earlier, for AI career-proof, um, you know, jobs, really highlighting the need for people that can care for our aging population. Because it is aging across the country, across the state. And these are careers that um, they're gonna continue to give opportunities for a long, long time for a lot of our, of our community members. So really kudos to all of you. Um, Gomez, or Mr. Gomez, congratulations again on your appointment. And I can't wait to see next year your presentation and tell us all the great things you're, you're continuing to do at MRAS. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Guzman. Uh, I'll just close out by saying thank you so much for taking the time to present to us today. Uh, to our student speakers, to Susanti, to Maria, to Matthew. I know how difficult it might be to come up and speak in front of an audience like this, but you guys did amazing. Um, hearing your stories, it always inspires me to double my efforts to support our students, particularly at MRAS. And uh, seeing everyone sticking it out tonight, uh, to share their stories, to talk about the programs, to let us know what's, uh, what's working and where we can better support you. That's what I am here for. I want to make sure that if I go out into the world and I speak to someone and say, I need additional resources for my, for my adult school program, I can point to what, the work that you're doing, the education that you're receiving and say, this is why we need that additional support. This is why we need those resources. And I was being genuine earlier to, to you, Mr. Gomez and to uh, Ms. Perez, Mrs. Perez, excuse me. If you need us to go and meet with somebody, or if you want to make an introduction with somebody, please let us know. You know, we are here to support you. We go out of our way to meet with legislators all of the time. All of us on this dais have relationships with legislators, both at the state and the federal level. We have relationships with our local representatives here in the cities that we represent. We want to make sure that folks know what's, folks know what, what is going on at MRAS. And if I can bring you into a meeting and have you share your story. Or have you share data with us that I can share with the legislator and show them, this is where these dollars are going, this is the impact that they're having. Something tangible that they can see. And most importantly, if I can invite those legislators, or whomever it may be, other community members and have them visit our adult school and show them the facilities, our well-kept facilities, our beautiful facilities. Definitely will invite them next year when we have our ribbon cutting for the Rosemead Center. And show them, this is what MRAS does. And I've, I'll close with this, and I think I've shared this story, you know, a thousand times before. And growing up in this community, many of my own family members, my mom, my dad, my aunts, my stepsister, my stepbrother, they all went through MRAS. They went through the ESL program there. They went through the US, the citizenship program there as well. We used to have weekly dinners with a teacher from MRAS many, many, for many, many years ago. Mr. Figueroa, I think uh, Annette might remember that name. Roberto Figueroa, from the ESL program from many years ago. We used to have a weekly dinner with him. He taught all of my family members and we had a very special relationship with him. And so my, my experience with MRAS goes very far back. And I remember watching my dad, who worked the caller job as a machine operator, coming home from work, sitting down at the dining room table and doing his ESL homework. And that is not something that I ever expected from my dad. Because my dad had a third grade education before he left Mexico to come to the United States. But he enrolled in MRAS, he went through the ESL program, he went through the citizenship courses there and then became a US citizen. And I credit his success in life and our family's own success. We faced many challenges growing up. I credit our success as a family to MRAS because they gave my family an opportunity. They gave my parents an opportunity. Now, my mom was unfortunately uh, passed away when we were very young and she only managed to get through the ESL courses before she could take her citizenship classes. But had she lived, she would have continued on through MRAS. And I guarantee you, she probably would have continued into one of the CTE courses as well. Because before my mother came to the United States, she was a nurse in Mexico. She loved helping people out and I know that that was her passion and she would have continued on had she still lived. So thank you, all of you for being here today. I appreciate all the information. Please keep us informed, most importantly, let us know when you have events on campus. Whatever they may be, as small as you may think they are, please let us know. Love, love, love to show up and support your students and your programs there. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Breones, I forgot, one thing if I may.
Go ahead.
One thing. You know, board members don't always agree, okay? And Mr. Breones and I know that on some things we do not agree. But if there's one thing that we do agree on, is the services that we provide to our students. And he's absolutely right when he says that your stories matter when we talk to our legislators. And we all know legislators, but legislators don't just want data with numbers. They want human beings and human stories attached to them. So when you're sharing those stories, those are stories that we can specifically share and put a name to it. And you're right on, Ms. Perez, when you say, you know, that, that those stories is what the legislators want to know what you're gonna do with their money. So you are correct, Mr. Breones is correct. On that, we can agree. And I will remember these stories and share them every time I can with my legislators. You know, we have a new congressman in the city, Congressman Gilce Snerdros. We also have done a lot of work with Senator Susan Rubio. I know Judy Chu, I know a lot of times we're preaching to the choir, but thank you for your stories. Your stories were so, they weren't quick, they were long. And I will remember each one of your stories and the song there, they're, they're gonna be with me. It, it wasn't like a short little comment, it was your true life story. And uh, I, I want to give credit to Mr. Breones when he says that, that is very true. The legislators love your stories. So that's it, Mr. Breones, I, I agree with you uh, on that a hundred and ten percent.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
So with that, we are gonna move on to our next presentation, uh, presentation number two on the Rio Hondo Summer Math Academy. Mr. McGinnis and Mr. Sanchez, please join us. I have to correct myself, Dr. McGinnis and Mr. Sanchez, join us.
Dr. McGinnis, there we go. I have a comment. Um, Dr. McGinnis's name, oh, you can't, you don't have the uh, agenda.
Oh, yeah. Dr. Guzman just pointed out there's an I missing from your name in the online agenda. So one minor correction and it.
Well, you know what, just don't call me late for dinner. I don't care what you call me.
Well, after tonight's meeting, I think we may have to, but by all means.
Well, that's a, that is a difficult act to follow with the MRAS team. It's an impressive program uh, to be, and it's a great to be part of. So with that, good evening President Breones, members of the board, uh, Dr. Zuniga, members of the cabinet and our entire community. It's a privilege for us to be here tonight to share with you an update about our uh, re, our first ever Rio Hondo uh, Summer Math Academy partnership. Along with me is our math tosa that uh, you know, Alex Sanchez. Um, and then also in our audience is Yolanda Emerson, who is from uh, Rio Hondo Math Academy as well. And uh, this marks a great partnership that we're embarking upon together to provide support and service to our students in, in math instruction. So tonight, we're gonna show you a little bit of uh, the data, uh, give you an update on uh, our successes and some of the lessons we've learned as we prepare for uh, moving forward in this program. So with that, uh, I'll start with a little bit of the um, timeline. So just so you know, we, we began uh, having conversations back in twenty twenty-four with Rio Hondo, uh, the Rio Hondo team to get to know each other, to get to know the programs, see what was available, to see how they would incorporate, uh, interact with uh, our programs. Uh, we uh, came and hosted a, a presentation to the board uh, at the tail end of twenty twenty-four. And then in the beginning of twenty twenty-five, uh, in January, we began and solidified our MOU with them, our Member, Memorandum of Understanding, to be able to step into this program. And then in earnest, our work really began in recruiting students and talking about the program and sharing the information around to our, our campuses. And so um, I wanted to start with this timeline, just so that we're aware that we were on a, on a, on abbreviated timeline for our very first uh, step into this. Uh, so now knowing what we know, we'll be much more conscientious and able to advertise and recruit and uh, um, get our students into the classes that they deserve uh, in a much more timely fashion moving forward. Uh, and that brings us to our, our parent information nights. Those happened in March. We hosted them here in, in the district office and uh, I won't uh, foreshadow everything, but that's another lesson that we learned. Uh, we had um, a, a good turnout, but it could have been much better. And we think that with making some adjustments to those parent information nights, host them at the students' schools that were gonna get a, a better turnout, to get some more information to our families so that they can make an informed decision. Following the parent information nights, then we were uh, rostering and, and getting students registered and communicating. And then we got to kickoff on the first day of summer school uh, with a very successful program, something that we're really quite excited about. Uh, we're gonna share a little bit of that data and then some of our lessons learned. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to our math tosa, who also served as the uh, site coordinator, the district coordinator for Rio Hondo Math Academy. So he was kind of wearing two roles, uh, and that's a huge benefit for us because uh, not only was he able to advocate for the needs that he knows that are present in our district, but he was also able to be that, that, that continuity between the two programs. So with that, Alex.
Sorry, gotta bring it down, Dr. McGinnis is a little taller than me. Could just a bit, right? He's got a built-in ladder. Okay, uh, thank you so much uh, for having me today. I'm your uh, proud math tosa, Alejandro Sanchez. It's great to be here with you guys tonight. Um, I'm really excited about this presentation. This is probably like my favorite part of like being in this position is uh, the celebratory um, opportunities that, that we get um, through uh, these types of initiatives. Um, I know we have a tough act to follow with uh, MRAS. Um, Mr. Gomez did an amazing job, but I want to continue that tone of celebration as we go through uh, these slides because there's a lot to celebrate here. Um, first piece is um, the sections that we offered in the summer. Um, we offered fourteen sections of math, which was the most out of any of the districts in the Rio Hondo Math Academy. So there's clearly a very huge need in our district for, for programs like this. And that was really cool to see and that was a, a, something that um, I learned as I was being the coordinator for, for the Math Academy. Um, our students participated in a five-week program that was Monday through Friday for six hours a day. Yes, six hours, right? And some people didn't think that students would be able to, to handle that, but our students passed with flying colors. They, our students are very resilient and they, they managed to schedule flawlessly. And then that's also not including the additional hour of tutoring that we offered them after the Rio Hondo Math Academy, which we also had a, a large participation uh, from our students. So definitely kudos to them. Um, and not only is it hard um, to do six hours of math a day um, for five weeks, it's also very difficult to teach six hours of math for um, five weeks. So I, I definitely want to give kudos to our math teachers in the district who stepped up to the plate and also took on the challenge of doing six hours of math every single day for five weeks. So we had a great staff um, participate who made our summer a, a huge success. Um, I also want to give uh, kudos to Yolanda Emerson, who did a, a great job of, of filling in the, those extra spots that um, we had for the Math Academy. It was roughly about half of our teachers were in the, participating in the uh, Math Academy and the um, other half of teachers that were part of it were from out of district, which um, you know, sometimes you have some reservations about like who's coming into the, the school, what kind of a quality of a teacher, um, what kind of skills are they bringing? But um, Yolanda did a great job of vetting all the teachers and doing interviews and, and gave us a lot of really great staff to support the students in the summer. Some staff that I want to try to steal, hopefully when we get some math positions opening up here in the district because they were really great teachers. I got a chance to do a lot of observations and provide feedback and, and I saw a lot of talent. So um, definitely looking forward to that. Not pictured in, in this uh, photo is um, our tutors. Um, every single teacher had a tutor that supported the, the um, teacher throughout the day for the entire um, school day, for the entire six hours. And those tutors were actually our graduating class of twenty twenty-five, our graduating seniors. So that was really cool that they got to, you know, get out of school and have a job right away and, and support um, our teachers in the classroom. And which was awesome too, because they're kind of like role models, are very close to our students' age. So they served also as role models for them. And um, you know, so I want to thank uh, our madrina, Yolanda Emerson, who sent our kids to college with some college money. You know, so that was really cool, uh, really great experience for our kids and we got a lot of positive feedback from them. So let's get into some data. Um, the top left-hand corner um, shows the enrollment um, uh, by course and by um, school. Um, these were students who attended at least one day of the Math Academy. Um, we didn't count students who uh, might have signed up and didn't show up. We only counted students who um, stepped into our classroom and, and for at least one day. That would be the top left-hand corner. And you see um, it's um, organized by course and by designated site. The table on the right-hand side represents students who completed the program. And the bottom, uh, left-hand corner uh, represents students who were successful, meaning they completed uh, um, the academy with a C or above. Um, a celebration point is for our um, students who completed the program. We had a attrition rate of about ten percent, which uh, if you've ever worked summer school, um, summer school usually have a lot more attrition than that, right? Um, in my experiences, I've had up to like a third of my class um, drop just in the first week, you know, for, for various reasons. They can't make it to class or, or, or they wake up late or whatever it is. But our kids were excited to be in class um, every single day. Our, our teachers did a great job of keeping the classes fun and engaging. So that's a, a big point to celebrate. Um, and for our successfully completed students, C or above, we had um, eighty-five percent of our students overall in the district be successful in this Math Academy. They got a C or above, which is huge, right? We don't see these kind of numbers typically in, in, in our summer school. So again, something else to, to celebrate. And even the students who weren't successful, those, those twenty-three kids, they got a chance to do a full year of, of the curriculum and now they're gonna have, uh, they're gonna be better prepared when they start school in the fall um, to take those courses. So um, definitely it's still a, a benefit for, for everybody. And I think this is probably the most sections we've ever offered um, in the summer um, for, for students in math. So that was really um, one of our, our big celebrations for us um, as a district. The bottom right also includes a, a table for Mountain View High School. We didn't have a section for the Math Academy at Mountain View High School, but Mountain View High School students did participate and were also um, um, very much just successful with uh, forty-four participating and forty-two uh, completing the program with the C or above. The following chart um, represents uh, the, the data by demographics. We included um, our, our biggest um, populations of students, which were Hispanic and Asian students. And um, another celebration point is we saw how successful um, our students were in, in this program. And, and these are numbers that you don't typically see in summer school. And from my experience um, teaching summer school and seeing the data, this, this was amazing, this was great. I mean, I, I can't emphasize how much um, of an impact um, this school had, or this program has uh, done into our district, especially um, accelerating our students and giving them access to, to calculus, right? We see that um, access to calculus is one of the biggest barriers in having students um, access higher level education. Uh, in fact, this summer, um, before the Math Academy, Mr. Breones and I and the other math teachers, we watched a movie called Count It Out, right? Which talked about these different barriers that prevent students from, you know, um, access to higher education, access to informed decision-making and access just to opportunity in general. So um, the Math Academy just fits perfectly into our current systems that we have in place to support our low achieving students, to help them, get them to grade level um, by the time they make it to um, their junior and senior year. And especially their junior year when they, they take the, the high-stakes tests like the S-Back um, assessment.
And if I could just chime in really quick. I'm glad, I'm glad you mentioned the uh, the film that we watched. One of the things that I took away from not only that film, but also a presentation at the California Latino School Board Association uh, conference last week is when we talk about students who have that achievement gap. And in, in order to close that gap, you have to cram a whole lot more content in the same amount of time to get them to that same X-point as everyone else. And looking at these numbers, this is definitely an opportunity for us to provide additional. And looking at these numbers, this is definitely an opportunity for us to provide additional instruction in the same amount of time in order to close that achievement gap with our students without impacting the instructional day during the school year. So I'm seeing some very positive results here, but I'll let you finish the presentation before we dive in a little bit deeper.
Yeah, and definitely the summer is probably one of the biggest points where students suffer from learning loss, right? If they don't practice math, they tend to forget things. So the fact that we had such a huge number of students participate, you know, 527, I think that was great. And piggybacking on what Dr. McGinnis said earlier, you know, it was our first year rolling out the math academy. So this year, we're going to be a lot more prepared. We're going to be able to really start promoting it a lot sooner and getting more students to sign up. And I think next year is going to be even bigger than we had this year. So I'm really excited for that. And so to continue those celebrations, I'm going to bring back Dr. McGinnis back.
So you see some photos here of the end of the year pizza celebration. What student doesn't like pizza? And so this was something that we wanted to incorporate and include in the end of their program. But here's a list of some of the celebrations that we wanted to elevate for your information. First of all, the tutoring element of this program really yields, provides a positive yield. So yeah, six hours of math instruction and learning is rough. But our students persevered and they showed that they are capable of it, which contrary to some people's belief that was, you know, kind of, you know, put it back on them, right? So that's a great thing. And then look at the percentage of students that stayed afterwards. So we had students that, about 20 students per day that stayed an additional hour afterwards to work with those classroom tutors that were embedded in the program. And so this is a positive outcome. Students, as I mentioned, persevered through the rigorous daily schedule. It's a, it's a, it's a full load, right? This is, this is, this is a serious course. We accelerated almost 450 students, thereby increasing their access to higher level math like calculus. For many students, this was like their first college textbook that they received. Some students have had the exposure to dual enrollment courses or something like that. But for this, this was kind of, you know, something for them to brag about a little bit. We got some really good positive feedback, just based on our conversations with our staff members that were teaching the courses and the students that participated. So that's a positive energy that we'll move forward with. And of course, I wanted, he put this on the list, but I said it would be kind of hard for you to speak to, so let me speak to it. But having our own math tosa serve as the math academy coordinator really is a benefit. It's a good positive link with our partnership with Rio Hondo College. But it's also, you know, we have someone embedded in our program that knows our schools, knows our campuses, knows our teachers and our students. And so that's something that is to celebrate. And I want to thank you for your work in making that happen. With anything new, you were about to ask a question.
Yeah, before we go on to the next one, a small question to clarify. On our slides, both printed and online, there's accelerated 471 students. And here's 448. Is that the same number that we're talking about or is it just a typo?
You're saying we accelerated 448 students?
471. That's what we have here.
Okay, that must have been a typo. Those would be your completers.
Oh, okay.
448 would be the ones who got a C or better.
Got it. Okay, 471 is completer, 448 is the C or better. Okay, thank you.
A quick note on that. We try to make the program as fair as possible. So students who didn't pass the program or got a D or an F, that grade wasn't included in their transcript, so it didn't hurt their GPA. So it was like, you know, win-win, right? If you don't pass the math academy, it doesn't affect your grade, but you get that exposure to that curriculum, right? And if you pass it, then you just accelerate a full year of math within five weeks.
Good catch. We were hoping someone would catch that for us. Sorry. Yes. Okay. With anything new, there are some lessons learned, right? And so we want to be mindful of being reflective on the process so that we can get better at the implementation. So number one, I think providing that, coming back to that timeline that I began with, we'll have more time this year. So we're going to be able to provide clearer and more consistent outreach to our students and their families at an earlier base. So having our counselors with their flyers in hand when they're going to meet with our students in our K through eight districts that are matriculating up, so that we're starting those conversations early, starting the conversations early with our existing students. So that will, that will help us. I mentioned this already, but shifting the information sessions for families to the actual school sites instead of having it here in the district office. So we thought maybe this was going to be a good place to begin. I think people are going to probably be much more comfortable at their child's school site where they know and they know where to park, they know where to go. They feel a little more comfortable. So we're going to make that adjustment. We want to continue to recruit good people. So we're going to be reaching out to our students or our graduating seniors. To recruit them to become tutors in the program for this next year. We want to continue to provide that outreach and information for our existing teachers so that, you know, they've heard a little bit about it. They've, they've had some colleagues that have participated. So I think there's more awareness about the program, perhaps a little bit less trepidation for some. So we're anticipating that. So we'll have some more of our teachers stepping into that application process. I mentioned that we got some good feedback from people, but that was just anecdotally. We want to be really consistent about or systemic about that. Collecting a student and teacher feedback through forums, like what worked, what didn't work, what should we be thinking about as we move forward? Was the workbook valuable? Were there things that you wish it had, things that there was too much of, not enough of, things, questions like that? So that's, that's work that we are going to be embarking upon now. So that when we are preparing for this next program, we'll have actionable data. And then the last part is just really being intentional about now we have a new data set. So when we're looking at student progress and success throughout the years, we'll have this as another element to say, all right, let's take a look through the lens of the students that participated in the summer math academy. How are they progressing through their matriculation in the math series? Are they, what are their grades looking like? Are they sustaining that growth? So that'll be a new piece of data analysis that we'll add on to our system. So those are some of the, some of the lessons that we've learned that we want to highlight and get better at our practice. Looks like you got a question coming. So I'll pause right there. This is the end of our official presentation. So now would be a good time to ask questions or clarification.
Dr. McGinnis, for the student tutors or the graduated seniors, what's the pay for them?
$19 an hour.
How many hours do they?
Six hours a day. And they can potentially get an additional hour for tutoring, which a lot of them did because we had a lot of students coming to after-school tutoring. So we needed tutors to hang out and provide extra support for the teachers who were running tutoring.
So they could get anywhere between six to seven hours a day?
Correct.
Five days a week?
Five days a week.
Thank you. For five weeks. Thank you. I'll start with my colleague on my left, Justin Nguyen.
Yes. Do you, you listed ingredient of success. What do you think the most important ingredient of success for the Rio Hondo Math Academy? In your personal opinion, Mr. Alexander.
Can you repeat that one more time?
There's an ingredient for the success of the Rio Hondo Math Academy. What do you think is the most important ingredient that makes it so successful that we cannot make in our regular school?
You know, I think a lot of it had to do with the staff that was there and the people running it. We had a lot of great teachers with, you know, great attitudes and we all had good communication. Yolanda Emerson's a workhorse. She never stops, you know, she's always like, you know, keeping us up to date with everything and making sure that we're all supported. And the fact that I think we had this, you know, I don't want to toad my horn here, but the fact that we had a math academy coordinator, so I was able to really just kind of visit all the schools and provide support to make sure that everything was happening in a cohesive, uniform way. So we had, it was a small program, a small cohort of teachers. So we were able to really to kind of be on the same page on most things. You know, as the program would get bigger, more teachers, it's a lot difficult to keep everybody kind of like in the same page, right? So I think that was a big thing. It's just that collective teacher efficacy that we had in the summer.
Yeah, let me chime something in. You know, even though I'm not physically visiting your classroom, but I received so much feedback from the teacher that teaching the math academy itself, especially for one from our school district and also the student that been taught. So they told me that, you know, like I say, all business start with relationship. They feel like they belonging into the classroom and the teacher care about it. When I asked Mr. Yolanda Emerson, when you interview your teacher, what you do when you interview the teacher, how you vet the teacher? She told me, I'm not, I'm not a math person, but if that person can teach a lesson that I can understand, I hire him. I hire her. And those teachers are very dedicated. For instance, last Saturday, I went to, you know, Mr. Assembly My Fang Outstanding Educator Award. I talked, I asked him, you always taught calculus, how you feel about teaching a lower class? I say it's difficult, but they have a support that he need. The tutor during in the classroom and after the classroom. And that make him feel very comfortable, put 110%. That's why when he reached his capacity, the classroom, 25 or whatever, some kid want to get in, he open it up. And that's what dedication all about. The dedication of a teacher that willing to go extra mile to help our student. Remember, they are both Latino and Asian. You can see the gap become very smaller, smaller with all the effort put in together, collaboratively together. You can, we can make a big difference. That's why I and Mr. Padilla went to our feeder school district and make a case. We need everyone together on, you know, on the boat to work together. Because, you know, we, you know, we try to raise our expectation from graduation to A to G graduation. And math achievement is the biggest obstacle, challenges, you know, for all of our student. If we can work together with our partner like Rio Hondo or PCC or our feeder school, you know, they have all the number from feeder school, how the kid are performing when it come to our classroom. And also the new release excerpt that I asked from Dr. Zuniga and Dr. Rivers, the NWEA, the RIT score and percentage ranking star, you know, fire. You see how our kid performing, you know, mostly 50, 60% are below grade level. And that's not acceptable. And mostly, unfortunately, I don't want to bring the race into the education, but it is what it is. So we need to focus on what we do, we need to do more for our student, especially that subgroup to close the gap. You know, you go to any, you know, conference, CLSBA, CSBA, they tell you the same thing. The relationship is so important, so important, you know, the, all the teacher, your teacher buy in and it's transformed to the student. That's why you see the result. That's how I see it. All the teachers jump on board with wholeheartedly, you know, some of the teacher like Mr. Hartley, Mr. Oo, Mr. Vitrin and some, some, they love it. They love the way that you guys organize and give them support that they need. Otherwise, you know, during a regular classroom, they feel like they're just teaching and lecturing. And that's why we are not as successful as Rio Hondo Math Academy. And thank you so much, Mr. Yolanda Emerson. Thank you very much. You work very hard, I can tell you. And I don't have to be there to see you because all the feedback go to me a lot, a lot of feedback. That's why I able to hear and see people's story, not only from the student, but from the teacher. And that's what, you know, I think we can do better. We can learn from the Rio Hondo Math Academy and to improve ourselves as a school district. You're not only our school district, but all the feeder school district also. And that's all my comment. Thank you.
I'm actually going to go back to our student trustees. I neglected to ask them if they had any comments or questions on the presentation. So Ashley and Tessa, I'll leave it to you.
Yeah, I just want to give like feedback because I actually did the Rio Hondo Math Academy last summer. Yes, I took pre-calc for five weeks, six hours, sometimes seven, because I did stay for the tutoring. And now I'm currently a junior taking AP Calculus. So I was, I was able to cram, you know, a whole year of pre-calc into five weeks. The first day, we were in a very small room and we actually had to switch rooms because of how much students enrolled in the pre-calculus at Almani High School. So we, we needed a bigger room because of how many students enrolled. The first week was hard. I was tired and didn't want to wake up that early. But slowly like going through it, the next couple of weeks became easier. I saw like familiar faces of people I went to middle school with, because I go to South Almani, but the class was at Almani High School. And then I also made a lot of new friends that I still stay in touch with today. I want to give credit to my teacher, Mr. Howlinkar. He was the one who taught us pre-calculus. And it was super fast-paced, but he was very kind and he would encourage us and say like, I know it's hard, but like try your best. And almost all of us passed with a C or higher in the class. And we all like created a really like close-knit bond and like, we're going to get through this together. And the pizza party was super fun that we had at the end of the year. We were able to get seconds too, so that was nice. And then they also gave us this really cool like little utensil kit. And I still have my ruler and my eraser that says Math, Rio Hondo Math Academy on it. And I know a lot of kids at South who did the class with me, like pull it out and still use it to this day. So I'm super grateful for the math academy because I'm able to, you know, get ahead. And I remember you walking into our classroom to, you know, look around. And you credited Jaime Escalante, who was, who kind of like started this and like inspired and encouraged students of color that they're capable of, you know, like being taught this. And I think we should continue this and, you know, improve in many ways. So that's it. Thank you.
And is someone cutting onions in here? Because, thank you. That was beautiful. Thank you, Tessa.
Yeah, just going off of what she said, this program is absolutely amazing. I have a lot of underclassmen that took these classes over the summer. And the fact that I hear from them, they're like, oh yeah, it was like really like cool. It was hard, obviously because it's math. But they, they would still do it. They would do it next year as well. And one of my friends, he was actually a tutor at Almani High School for her class. And he would tell me like, there's a lot of kids in there, but it was like really rewarding because when you learn math, sometimes learning from your teacher for a long time, it gets harder and harder because it's like the same voice. So hearing it from not just another person, another voice, but a student's point of view and how they learn it, I'm sure it really helped all the kids there. So thank you for this program.
And we're looking for tutors. We're still looking for tutors if you guys are interested.
I got you next year.
Okay.
I'll be a tutor.
And I'm actually glad that you brought that up because I was going to say, as part of your outreach for next year's cohort, you definitely want to have students who have already gone through the program, be part of that outreach to share their stories. Because I'm sure they can connect a lot easier with students their age than any of us on the dais could, or perhaps even you. No offense to you. I'm sure you guys are wonderful people. But I think hearing from our students or a peer would probably be a lot more meaningful than hearing from somebody whose birthday starts with a 19. So. But I definitely want to encourage, no offense, I do want to encourage you to have students be part of the outreach to share their experiences. So thank you both for sharing.
I would like to add something. I really liked the part where you shared that if they get a D or F, it wouldn't be added to the transcripts. Because I think, I don't know if
because I think, I don't know if it was like promoted more when they told us about the program, but I feel like if more students knew about that, they wouldn't be as scared to go because obviously you hear that it's a five week course. And especially if it's pre-calc, you're like, oh my God, how am I gonna do that? That's so hard and I'm gonna fail. But then with that worry, oh, I'm gonna have a D or F on my transcripts because it's so like compact. But without having to worry about that, I feel like a lot of more students would definitely try and numbers would grow. Thank you for this whole academy.
Yeah, and just to add to that, even part of the, our grading process was at the end of the program, we did ask students, would you like us to include your grade in the transcript? Because I know even some students, if they get a C, especially like in pre-calc, they're like, nope, I don't wanna see in my transcripts. I'd rather just take the class again in the fall and get a B or an A. So we also gave them that option as well.
Really quick about that, a lot of students like really like that option about it not being on their high school transcript. And even if I had some kids in the class who didn't pass, but they were still like grateful that they're gonna take pre-calc for a year, but they're already like well-prepared and already have like notes that our teacher gave us. And really quick, I wanna flex, I passed with an A. That's it, thank you.
Thank you both for that. Mr. Padilla.
Absolutely, I have a lot to say. First of all, I just wanna commend the Rio Hondo College Board. You know, Anais Medina Diaz, Yarim, I got this wrong, Yaris Marrocha, Rosa Elba Lomeli, Cristo Orozco, Oscar Valladares. I wanna thank them along with Yolanda Emerson, the dean at Rio Hondo College. Thank you so much from the bottom of my heart for the investment that you have made in my community. In the entire time that I have been an educator, thirty-four years, and the entire time that I've been on this board, thirteen years, never, never have I seen powerful, powerful math test scores like this in any district. And not even in this district, which I say things that make people feel uncomfortable and I lean into the discomfort and okay, and I'm okay with that. We need to eliminate the damn math summer school program that we've had traditionally that does not work for kids. It does not work. We've done it for years. We did it when I was at Rosemead High School and it didn't work then and it does not work now. Why? Because traditionally what we do is we have our kids take two classes during summer school. Let's say you take math Monday through Friday. In one week, you only get ten hours of instruction, ten. And you're trying to cram all this into the five-week period. Here, you get thirty hours of instruction in one week. Of course, the students are gonna do much better because we have the right support. We have tutors, tutors that come from households that are on free and reduced lunch. Not only do they help our kids with their math and, and he, Mr. Breones nicely called you old. And it's true, the kids work better and respond better to peer tutoring. Okay? It works, it's phenomenal, okay? And we have seen it. Another thing I wanna say is to those educators, if you're one of those educators who opens their mouth and says, oh no, our kids cannot handle six hours of math. It's too long, they're gonna get tuned out. Be quiet because our kids already showed you that they can handle that and even more. Our kids are very resilient. Don't pass your own math insecurities that maybe you have onto our kids. Because when I see that eighty-one percent of my Latino kids have passed, that's powerful to me. When I see that ninety-one percent of my Asian students are passing, that is awesome. But I am not okay with the disparity. I've even been called a racist by one particular school. I don't wanna name them, Mountain View High School. They said that I was a racist because I only cared about the Asian kids. And they attacked me and Mr. Qui. You can call me whatever you want, but we cannot continue to do what we've always done and expect different results for Latino kids. Our Latino math test scores in this district have been horrendous. They've been pathetic, they suck. But we continue to do the same thing? No, I am not okay. And I've had this compelling conversation with our superintendent and I backed off. And Dr. Zuniga can, you know, say if I'm lying, but I said, Dr. Zuniga, why are we offering the math summer program if we know it doesn't work? But I don't just want you to take my word for it, Dr. Zuniga. I would like to see the data for, you know, couple of years of the passing rate of kids that have been taking the summer school program that doesn't work. We need to move forward and we need to encourage all of our incoming freshmen to enroll in this program. Because when I hear from the mouth of Tessa and Ashley, everything that they said, and this is the reason why we have student voice here, because they've actually have gone through it. If we tell our eighth grade parents that have incoming freshmen that this is what we're going to do and we build it and they will come and we support it and we have tutors and we nurture them and we feed them and we make them feel well and we get that fear of math away from them, it can happen. This is the very first year that we did it and look what happened. Eighty-one percent in my entire career, I have never seen that. And if there's a district or a teacher who can show me of a summer school program that has that passing, that high passing rate, specifically also for Latino kids, we know our Asians have done well traditionally, we know that. Do we want them to continue to do better? Absolutely. And this is the program that will support you if you're Latino or if you're Asian and you will achieve at a very high level. Another thing, our attendance rates, okay? In this district, we all know, you hear me preach, it's always one, two, Rosemeade, Arroyo, our two gold ribbon schools. We know that Almani High School is on the tails of Arroyo and Rosemead, third place. We know that South Almani is fourth place in attendance and Mountain View is always last. Give me those, that data that you just gave me right now. When I look at attendance, the achievement is just the same. And I know Dr. McGinnis and I'll put you on the spot. You didn't give me the numbers of how many, how many total number of kids participated from Arroyo and from Rosemead and from Mountain View and from South Almani. You know, I can tell you that it was probably like Rosemead and Arroyo the highest. Almani was the third, South Almani was fourth and then Mountain View was fifth. Correct me if I'm wrong, did you have that data on there? Okay.
We just had completion. Well, we just had completion rates as far as if we go back. Yeah, just the students who completed the program, not necessarily attendance, but I mean, if they completed the program, they were here pretty much every day.
But the point I'm trying to make is kids that come to school do better than kids that don't come to school. So these kids that came to your program, they're achieving at a very high level. But one thing I need to tell you that we need to do a better job, and I know this for a fact. If you get the assistant principals to go over to the summer, to the middle schools and recruit the kids and tell them that this is what we're going to do, they will come. Because like that young man who's already eighteen from the adult school, who said, I didn't know how to be an adult, I didn't know, nobody ever told me. If we tell our kids that this is what all incoming freshman students need to do, they will experience success and they will move ahead by one year. Let me refer back to my notes. Thank you, Yolanda Emerson, to you and to your board. And I'm gonna go out on a limb and I'm gonna ask our board. Mr. Breones, I would like to give a certificate to Rio Hondo College for this investment of what they've done for our community. Never have we seen this. I would like to get consensus for our board to recognize Rio Hondo College for this great investment. Who goes? I don't care who goes, I'll go along with whoever presents the certificate. But this is something that cannot be overlooked and we, we can talk about that later. I do wanna see more students from Mountain View High School. I'm gonna press hard on that. We need to do a better job. Whoever the assistant principal is over there and Mr. Banyas, read my lips. You need to get them out to the middle schools to recruit kids for this program. Okay, you cannot be the lowest achieving school in math and have the least enrollment in the math academy program. Unacceptable, and I will say it. If, if the shoe fits, wear it, do something about it to fix it. I also, Mr. Breones, would like to, if it's possible, our teachers who taught in this program, can we recognize those students with a certificate as a, as a way to thank them for the amazing work and the amazing achievements that they have completed in this program, Mr. Breones? I will continue. Again, we need to get rid of the summer bridge program, that's my two cents. I know Dr. Zuniga told me to be patient, that we were transitioning to this new program. And I said, fine, I'll be patient, I'll let it live. Let me tell you, I wouldn't be this vocal if the test scores from Rio Hondo College would have been pathetic. I would have said, you're right, I'm gonna back off, let's, let's go a different route. But that's not the case. We talk about equity, this is a program that will bring equity. This is a program that will get our kids to compete. Because in this district, we have a problem with mathematics. Many students in this district take Integrated Math One, Integrated Math Two, and then we do all kinds of stuff for Integrated Math Three. We get very creative and long story made long already. We impede or put blocks in the way from those kids accessing those jobs that Mr. Qui Win has always talked about, the jobs that his kids get. The jobs where his kids are making a significant amount of money and many of our kids are limited because of us. Because we don't do something to make sure that they take three years of math. And that is a dirty little secret in our district that we need to fix. And we must take responsibility for that. To Rio Hondo, to La Madrina, thank you. Thank you for hiring our kids. The majority of our kids in this district, we come from free and reduced lunch. Yours truly was one of those students. So when you put a paycheck in them, like Mr. Breones asked, how much money are you paying them? And you're paying them nineteen dollars an hour? That puts food on the table for brown kids and minority kids in this district, which are the kids that we serve. Five hundred and four students enrolled, I think that we, we could do better than that, you know? And, and I know it's five hundred and four for all the grades, but I know that in an area that we can improve is for incoming freshmen. We must improve, we must improve because it's very hard for teachers to fill that hole, to fill that gap. I'm glad that we finally have the right assessment in NWEA where we know where their holes are. Because when we first adopted the first assessment, we got the wrong one. And you know that, Dr. McGinnis, we had the wrong assessment that told us exactly what we already knew, that our kids were very low, but we didn't know low in what. So now, schools are trying to scramble and figure out, how are we gonna plug some of those holes? When are we gonna teach that instruction that is at their level? Because I get it, we can't spend doing remediation, you know, all, the whole, the whole year, but we gotta do some remediation somehow, somewhere. But I get it that we have to expose them to grade level curriculum. Eight to two PM, six hours, plus those tutors that wanted extra hours tutored our students even more and support in the classroom. I always remember the day that Mr. Qui Win, you, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, Dr. Rivas, and you, Dr. McGinnis, you went into a classroom in Integrated Math One. And correct me if it wasn't the right math. The kids needed so much help, you four were not enough to provide all the tutoring. What level of math was that when you made that visit and, and you guys were all tutoring and it still wasn't enough? Was it an IM one or an IM two?
IM one.
IM one, thank you, Dr. Zuniga. So when I hear, you know, Tessa and when I hear, you know, Ashley talking about how they enjoyed their program, these two kids are cream of the crop from our district. And I like it when I hear them say, yeah, more kids would have taken it if we would have done a better job announcing that, it won't go on your transcript. So that's note to us to fix that, our messaging needs to, needs to happen. Thank you for making the change that you're not gonna have a meeting here at the district and then nobody shows up and then we say, oh, they're not interested. No, you need to go to their place, their school, their comfort zone and offer it to them. Build it, they will come. Build it and they will come. Who paid for all the curriculum for this math academy? Who paid for it?
The district.
Which district?
The Almani Union High School District.
All right, and who paid for the teachers?
That would have been Rio Hondo College.
And how much do we pay for summer school in this district? When we do summer school, how much do teachers get paid?
That would be.
Mrs. Torres, do you wanna provide that answer?
You did. For, this year we had an MOU with our summer school teachers to do seventy dollars an hour.
Seventy dollars an hour, thank you. And how much were the teachers that volunteered to teach the Rio Hondo Math Academy? How much were they paid there?
It depended if they had a master's, if they had a master's, I believe it was seventy-one an hour. If they didn't, it was sixty-nine.
Got it. And who paid for the tutors for all of these students here in our district to tutor them in math?
That would be Rio Hondo.
Okay, and there was also a workbook that students really enjoyed. I wanna hear from Tessa and from Ashley, what did you think of the workbook?
The workbook was good, I still have it in my room. But they have an answer key on the back, so you would do it by yourself and then you could check whether or not you got it wrong. And then the, it's like flexible and the sheets can tear out easily. So our teacher would be like, okay, your homework is on page, whatever, you tear it out and then you can, you know, fill it in and then check whether or not you got it wrong. It was, it was really helpful for me personally.
So should we continue that or get rid of that?
I think we should continue it.
And who paid for the workbook?
Almani Union High School District.
Got it. So was I right on when I said that Mountain View High School had the lowest participation rate? Or correct me if I'm wrong?
Based on the data, yes.
And was South Almani like number four in terms of participation? In terms of?
Yes.
And was Almani High School number three?
Yes.
And who had the highest participation rate in, who was one and two?
Rosemead would have had the highest participation and then Arroyo.
So if Rosemead had the highest participation rate, what was that number?
They had two hundred, it's actually here, two hundred and eight students.
All right, and what was the participation rate for Mountain View High School?
Mountain View was forty-four students.
So I'm gonna put you both on the spot. What do we need to do to increase those numbers? What is your suggestion, Dr. McGinnis?
Much more intensified recruitment, starting earlier, connecting both with our existing students that we have at Mountain View and also with our feeder districts.
And who should do that?
We all are responsible for that.
Right, but you're not all at Mountain View High School. So tell me, who, who are we gonna task with that at all of our high schools? I don't just want everybody and then nobody does it. Who, who would be the most effective person?
Yes, so it's the, it really is the guidance administrator and their counselors and, and people like Alex are, those are all people that would be part of this recruitment process.
Okay, so like a vice principal going over to the middle schools?
Yeah, the assistant principal of guidance usually is, is leading that charge along with the guidance counselors.
So who would the vice principal be at Mountain View? Who would be tasked with that? Who's the vice principal who would handle that?
That's Olga.
Olga, okay, she's new, right?
Correct.
Okay, and who would it be at Arroyo?
That's James Eder.
And who would it be at Rosemead?
Jovu.
And who would it be at South Almani?
That is Dr. Ortiz.
New, right?
Correct.
And which school am I forgetting? Almani would be?
Erica Palmer.
Erica Palmer, right, she came from Rosemead, right. So, good, you know, I just wanted to put that out there so that it's crystal clear about what we're doing and where we're going. And again, Yolanda Emerson, thank you so much for being here tonight. You know, it's really late. You know, thank you for loving our community, thank you for this investment, you know? I don't know if you could provide like a dollar amount. I would like to see a dollar amount of what the investment from Rio Hondo College has been to our district, to our, our children, to our families. And more and more parents are gonna hear about this. I will make sure and I know Qui will make sure. And our next stop is the Mountain View School District, okay? Qui and I don't mince our words, we go and tell them what it is, we show them the data. And of course, in education, we always make data-driven decisions, you know? That's been like something we hear all the time. So we've got the right data to go out and do our little dog and pony show. So, Mr. Qui Win, thank you for going with me to Rosemead School, Elementary School District. Thank you for going to my day job. I went to my day job and Mr. Qui's like, you're gonna go to your day job? They're gonna get upset with you. I don't care, you know, I've been an employee there for thirty-four years and when I go there, I'm not speaking as their employee. I'm speaking as an elected official and an advocate for my kids. So, you know, it is what it is. We must continue to work together with the neighboring school districts. And after Mountain View, we're going to Violindo School District. A great district with a great superintendent, but even there, they can make some great gains in, in their math program. So, long story already made long, I make it real long. I, I wanted to say what I wanted to say. Uh, I, I wanted to say what I wanted to say on record. Yolanda Emerson, you know, so, thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. This is the greatest achievement that I have done during my thirteen years here. This is it. This will be my legacy, uh, to Almani City School District if I decide not to run next year. Thank you.
Dr. Galvez.
Good evening. Uh, thank you so much for the presentation and thank you so much to Rio Hondo for the partnership. I know that this is just as beneficial to you guys as it is for us because I know that you're able to use our five hundred and twenty-seven students as enrollment. So you get ADA dollars from this program and I know that's what's able to invest the money back into this program. I really appreciate that. At my district, we partner with, uh, Mount SAC and we've been running a program similar to this for three years now. Uh, so I'm really excited to know that Almani Union has brought a program like this that other districts are doing, um, and successfully implementing it. I did have just one question, uh, about, my sisters are twenty-nine and thirty. They're both RNs, they're products of Almani City School District, not Almani Union, but Almani City School District. Um, and when they were attending Frank Wright, like eighteen years ago, Frank Wright was already doing amazing work, so kudos to EMCSD that my sisters were going to Arroyo to take Algebra 1 back then, it was before Integrated Science 1. So I know that EMCSD has been doing a good job of funneling kiddos into that first level high school class back eighteen years ago. So I can imagine that now, after eighteen years of doing this, we must be doing a pretty good job. Are we still funneling kids in like that or how, what does that look like? Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Yes, um, I don't have the recent numbers off the top of my head, but we do have students that are participating in math courses and instruction on our high school campus that are still in middle school. So we work with the, uh, middle school administration to identify when is the best time to have students work with their families for, uh, to get them to our campuses. Uh, we have seventh and eighth graders that are taking Integrated Math 1, Integrated Math 2, and even 3, so that's, that's still in existence.
So that makes sense because, uh, our IM 1 numbers are kinda low and because this is a get-ahead class for the most part, I think with time, we'll be able to turn it into more students taking these classes. But I would guess that these five hundred and twenty-seven kiddos who took these classes are all our get-ahead kids already. Um, so that would make sense that the IM 1 numbers are kinda low, being as those seventh and eighth graders. At least I know for EMCSD, cause I went there and then I taught there, so I can only speak to that district, has been doing this for a long time already. Um, so I, that makes sense that IM 1 is so low, cause if you look at like AHs, I would assume that maybe some of those kids who were taking IM 1 this year as a seventh or eighth grader, maybe jumped into that IM 2 column. Um, cause I was trying to figure the, those numbers out. Uh, but thank you for the presentation. I'm so excited to see how this impacts our scores in years to come. We would have no idea how it impacts test scores right now, being as though it didn't happen till the summer. Students took a state test junior year last year in like, um, April-ish, right? So we can't say that it's impacting our test scores positively just yet, but I am looking forward to what it's gonna do in the future. Um, and just, I think really getting to school sites, like you guys said, at the sites will be really helpful and parents might want to be willing to come a little bit more. Uh, oh, my last question was, is it only EMCSD who's been doing that get-ahead for kids for eighteen years now or does Rosemead District do that as well? Does Violendo do that as well? Does Mountain View do that as well? Do we know?
No.
Okay.
I'm saying so because, um, Rosemead right now, PCC take over because jurisdiction. And, uh, you know, I know, I know Violendo and, um, and Mountain View School District have Rio Hondo, but they hold one class.
Oh, no, 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 that's...
About eighth graders.
Yeah.
High school.
Yeah.
In all our districts, all our, all our districts do this, all our partners?
In some capacity, I, I'm more aware of the, uh, Almani City School District links, but, but I would need to get back to you on that.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Galvez, and thank you for highlighting that about, uh, the numbers at Arroyo. I think when we look at data, we have to provide context and without that whole picture, sometimes the data gets skewed and doesn't provide accurate information. I'm gonna go back to, to Ashley, you had a comment or a question?
Yes, I had a comment. Um, it was something I wanted to say while Mr. Padilla was talking as well, but this doesn't just go for him, it goes for, um, not just people here on the dais, but everyone in education. I get that when we talk about our stats and who, how many people are attending our classes, how people are passing, how people are like failing, there's always gonna be a high number and a low number. And I know that you said that Mountain View, like they don't attend classes or attendance rate, but let's not give them that like discrimination, cause I know they go through a lot of things, but I know that you always say that you say the things that are hard for people to say and makes, it might make you feel uncomfortable, but regardless, as a student and as the representative of the students on, um, the Almani Union High School District, hearing those things hurt and as a kid, we're still growing. If you tell me I'm not gonna go to like a UC school, I can't make it because, oh, I'm not doing enough, I'm gonna believe that. Or, oh, I'm not taking any classes, like my attendance low, my attendance rate is low, then I'm gonna stay at home more because you already don't believe me. Like, I know that our scores and our attendance is low, that's, I understand that and I can see that and I'm sitting here and I see that. But consistently telling us we can't do it and not ever saying that, I believe you can do it, we will help you get to those places. It's low right now, but you can do better. I feel like those are the things that we need to implement and say more on this board because it's something not just, um, our educators need to know, it's what our students need to know. Some students actually do watch this and some teachers actually do as well because they tell me that they do. And although they may see me being like, you know, talking right now, it's kinda weird. Um, but, uh, they do watch and the fact that they do watch it, it's really important that we emphasize how we're supporting our kids, not just being like, oh, you're low and you're on the lowest, um, rank out of everyone. Rosemead's high, Arroyo's high, Mountain View and South Almani are low. It shouldn't be like that. I, I can see that, we all see that, but saying that hurts as a student and hurts as a kid.
All right. And you know, Ashley, I appreciate you telling me that and you know, I would like Dr. Zuniga to show you our master schedules so you can see and understand where I'm coming from. I believe in, in you students. You are my why and you are the reason why I do this. But I want Dr. Zuniga, in one of the student advisory council meetings, to show you, um, the difference between schools that have math every day, like for example, Rosemead High School has math every day, um, Arroyo High School has math every day, Almonte High School has math every day, but our two schools that achieve at the lowest level have a blocked schedule. And look at the, let's look at the data and that's where these programs like Rio Hondo College will help our students because at those schools, they don't get math every day and you know that. And you know that if there's a holiday in there, that, that's even more detrimental. You are the cream of the crop. You, you get it, you can, uh, you know, get it together and achieve, but the majority of the students struggle with mathematics at both of those schools and the amount of minutes of instruction that they get is, is unacceptable. And it's been like that for years. So when I see a program like Rio Hondo College that comes and shows me that passing rate, I believe that those students can do it. That's why I'm so critical that if this is so good, why do we only have...
Mr. Padilla, I understand our like master schedule. We've seen it before in past SAC meetings and we've analyzed them before as well. And I know that you keep saying that me and Tessa are the cream of the crop, but what you don't know is that when I was in IM 3 last year, I struggled really hard to even make, um, migrate to be a B. And I know it's not like, oh, like I see, I'm not failing, but the fact that you can't really put me at such a high standard because I'm sitting here, I still struggle with math. It's my weakest subject. I am not taking, I haven't taken pre-calc, I'm not taking AP Calculus because I know that's not my strongest. But with knowing everyone and their stats and attendance and, um, whether they do good in school or not, always saying that they can't do it or they're at the bottom, we can't, we can't emphasize that all the time. And even if it's sometimes, it still hurts as a student, so I need you to please consider that and when talking to our students as well, because we hear it, we hear everything.
Absolutely. The point is well taken, but, but again, Ashley, I'm not going to back down when I only see that sixty-three students at South Almani High School were the only ones that participated when there's close to eight hundred and nine hundred kids. Same thing for Mountain View. I'm not going to accept that only forty-four kids get to come to such a wonderful program. But the point is taken. Uh, moving forward, I will continue to cheer for students and tell them that they can do it. And if I didn't believe that students could do it, I would resign and I would not run for office again. I've always believed that children from this district can achieve at a very high level. And I come from poverty, I'm an immigrant, English is not my strongest language or my first language. Um, I am, uh, was a student on free and reduced lunch, math was not my strong suit. So, but your point is well taken. Uh, moving forward, I will, you know, be more positive and encourage the students. Um, and again, I, I do expect these numbers from those schools to rise because that's the only way that students are going to achieve at a higher level, um, at those schools. If I just leave it as is and don't say anything, we will continue to do what we've always done and we already have data that shows that it's not good. So when I see something good like this, um, I want this to be my legacy. I want kids to participate in this program and I believe in this program, I believe in them, I believe in the tutors, I believe in the, uh, you getting tutored by a person that's your age. This is a great example that has shown me that. But moving forward, I will be, uh, more positive towards our students, uh, of South Almani High School and of, uh, Mountain View High School. Cause I want the same thing for, you know, a gold ribbon star school like Rosemead and Arroyo. I want the same thing for the children of South Almani, Mountain View, or from Almani. So I appreciate your, um, your comment.
Thank you. And as a student, um, I will say with everything that, I like, I know that you care for a lot about our students and I've seen you since I was in middle school. So I know that you've really worked with students basically like from more than seventeen years, cause that's how old I am.
Right.
But whatever you believe in us and being like, we, we can do it, like we got it, please say it to our face because if you don't, we're not gonna assume that. We can't assume just like, oh, it's implied. Even if like my parents, my teachers, they believe in me, I believe in more when they say it, so.
Absolutely. Thank you for that feedback, I, I appreciate it and I will take it in.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you, Ashley.
Dr. Guzman?
Yeah, I'm gonna keep it brief, um, but before I ask a couple of questions, I just have two questions. Um, Ashley, thank you for sharing that. I know that takes a lot of vulnerability and it probably wasn't easy, um, but it's definitely something we need to hear, um, because our words matter and like you said, our students, especially now that we live stream it, um, a lot of people watch it at home. Um, and, and it does matter. And I was just having this conversation, um, when we did the ribbon cutting for Mountain View High School and the reputation that it had and when I was growing up, um, you know, what we and a lot of the other schools thought about Mountain View and the Ducks and everything, right? Um, and it does affect students, it does affect the community that lives around there and it's hard to wanna do your best when you feel, even though it might not be true, that everybody's rooting against you because of how they see you and that image just stays with you, especially like you said, you're still forming your identity and words matter from adults. Um, and so thank you for, for sharing that. Um, it isn't easy for us to hear up here, but it is very much needed and so, um, very much appreciate the vulnerability that you showed and, um, sharing your, you're right, you're representing the students and if you feel that way, there's probably a lot of other students that feel exactly the same or worse. Um, so thank you for that. Um, I did have a question, um, just about Rosemead High School in particular. Um, they had the highest attrition rate, almost triple the attrition rate from the next school, which was Arroyo High School. They had thirty-one students, uh, versus Arroyo High School eleven, Almonte ten, South Almani four, Mountain View two. Um, do you have any sense of why so many students did not complete it? Was it a, a distance issue? Was it something else? Because it's considerably different, um, how many students were not completing from enrollment to the completion. Um, and if that's the take, then is that something that we need to then, um, pressure or not pressure, but really, um, uh, hold accountable PCC for supporting our students on this end of the district? So I'll let you answer first and then if, if that's not the answer, then if you have a better sense of why Rosemead has such a high dropout rate essentially.
Yeah, I think that's something that we have to look in a little bit more deeply. I mean, I, I have maybe some anecdotal data, just, you know, from my observations, but I think it'd be best to really kinda look at the data a little bit more closely, um, because we did have students, um, attend, um, schools that weren't their home schools, you know? So specifically, uh, Rosemead, since they offered all the, all the sections, we had a lot more students, you know, from Mountain View, from El Monte, from, uh, any, any class that had, um, 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 too, too many students and weren't able to enroll them there, we would just move them to, to Rosemead because we had open sections. So I know transportation was an issue and it was during the height of our ICE rates also as well. So I know we had some families that just told us like, we're not gonna take them to school anymore and that was that and we don't blame them, right? It was very tough. So, um, that's just some of like, just the, um, qualitative that I saw, but I think, um, you know, we need to sit down with, um, Ms. Emerson and, and look at the quantitative data and see, you know, what could also contributed to that.
Thank you. And then the other question, um, the outreach and I don't wanna make assumptions, but when you did the parent, um, outreach, was that in the, I know for the, it was one with the, at the district or coupled, um, was that in all threshold languages, the full communication, the outreach, everything and the in-person at the district, was that all in the four threshold languages that we offer?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, it was, um, Ms. Emerson and Dr. Leon, uh, doing those presentations here and they were all here in the, um, uh, district office.
Sorry, um, was that, uh, the interpretation, was that in Vietnamese, was that in Mandarin, was that in Spanish, English across the board for like the parent component as well as the outreach engagement? Was that all in, available in all four languages with bilingual people able to communicate to the parents that information?
We did, yeah. We, we provided flyers, uh, in, in multiple languages and the presentations here in the district were predominantly done in English and Spanish.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I, I do wanna, uh, highlight one thing. Um, Dr. Guzman kinda touched on it about being culturally sensitive and we do the outreach and it kinda ties into the comments that our student trustee, uh, made earlier about how we focus oftentimes on the deficit that we see as opposed to celebrating the positives that we're accomplishing. So one of the, one of the barriers I think that we face when we look at the numbers, the enrollment numbers, is a lot of this is, it's cultural. There are families who don't have a background, you know, those who have gone on to higher education, you know, many of the families on the south, the southern end of our district, uh, are, come from immigrant communities, primarily, uh, lower income immigrant communities where there's just not that focus on instruction. And they rely on, on us as a school district, as a system, to do the outreach to the students. And oftentimes those students, it's, we need to do a better job demystifying the instruction, especially math. You know, growing up, my experience was different than other students and I didn't know that. I just assumed that everyone experienced things the same way, you know, whether it be instruction or, you know, or being introduced to a subject. But the reality is that some of our students don't have, don't come from families that have that background where it's, you know, driven into you that in order to be successful, whatever metric you may use, that math is a key component to that. There isn't the expectation that you're gonna take a higher level math or that you're expected to take a higher level math. There isn't the expectation that you're going to complete your A through G requirements. There isn't an expectation that you will even go on to higher education. And I think part of our job as an institution, and this includes all of my colleagues up on the dais, is ensuring that we're providing the proper outreach to our families to explain to them in a way that they understand, meeting them where they're at, why this is important and making it clear that these resources are available to them, either internally through our own staff or through our partners like Rio Hondo College. And helping them understand, yeah, you can take a class, to your point, Ashley, but if you don't do as well as you thought you were gonna do or wanted to do, it's not gonna impact your transcript. do, it's not going to impact your transcript. But it definitely will give you a leg up when you take that course again during the school year. So a lot of it, I think, is is about demystifying what it is that we're offering and why it's beneficial, you know. And I mean, frankly, trying to explain to a student, to a seventeen-year-old, why you want to be in a math class for thirty hours a week for five weeks. That's going to be a significant challenge, which is why we have our students who should be out there championing this. You know, we should have our students be ambassadors for the program, whether it's the Rio Hondo Math Academy or anything else, going out there and explaining why this is important, why it's beneficial. Because the only way that we are going to ever get out of the situation that we are with low achievement, you know, or poverty, if we look at it from a macro level, here in this district, and really anywhere, is if we start addressing the root causes and start providing information that is culturally sensitive and relevant, and we start demystifying a lot of our systems. How many parents come to a campus and don't even know, the one, they wouldn't even know who to ask this question to, let alone what exactly the question that they need answered. So we want to do a better job. We have to do a better job. And this is not a knock on you two here today. I'm just giving a general statement. We need to do a better job of demystifying not only our own systems, but also explaining the benefits and sharing with them, you know, a campus isn't just the buildings. Yes, we invest millions of dollars in our physical plants. Yes, we had a wonderful ribbon cutting at Mountain View last week, you know, to complete the to celebrate the completion of the modernization projects. But what goes on in those classrooms, the instruction, the teamwork from our faculty, the dedication from all the support staff, that's what needs to be shared with everybody. And and we do, I think we do a lot more than many other institutions around here do. I think we dedicate a lot more resources, whether they're our human resources, or if, you know, human capital, or if it's actual financial investment in the in the facilities, whatever it may be. We invest a lot. And our community, I think, needs to see a return on that. But that means making sure that they understand why it's important. And that demystifying math instruction is going to be one of those keys. If our students come in and the expectation is, well, you're only going to get to a certain level, that mindset needs to change, not only within our own institution, but also those students themselves. If they come in with that assumption that I'm only going to get to a certain level, and that's acceptable, it's not. We need to have those conversations with them and help them understand that you can be as successful as you want to be, but that includes going above and beyond your own comfort levels. I think if I had been pushed more as a student, I may be in a different place in my life, you know, not that I have any regrets about anything that I've done. But I think a lot of the frustrations that I experienced as a student and as a young adult could have been alleviated with a little additional support. We have a lot of resources. And I think we need to be able to put those resources to work and make sure that we see all of this work come to bear, you know, with positive achievements. And I think to Ashley's point, definitely focusing on the positives. Yes, we have challenges. And some of those challenges are not occurring within the four walls of a classroom or the gates of one of our campuses. But we have to learn to work through those challenges, however however external they may be. Because once those students are in our care for those four years, we need to do everything that we can to encourage them to be successful, to look beyond the four walls of the classroom, to look beyond the boundary of the city that they live in. Because oftentimes our students don't even get out of the city, the community that they grew up in. We want to make sure that they have those experiences and know that there are expectations, that we are going to hold them to those high standards, and that our faculty, most importantly of all, believes in them and believes that they're capable of achieving and going beyond whatever minimal baseline there may be. So with that, I want to say thank you for your presentation. Thank you, Ms. Emerson, for being here with us today. I do appreciate Rio Hondo being a partner with us in this journey. And I look forward to next year's cohorts and the results from those those courses. And obviously, as I share with all of our presenters, if there's anything that you need from the board, please let us know. We are here to advocate for you. We're here to advocate for students and families in our schools. We want to make sure that you get all the support that you need, whether it's funding or human resources, or advocacy out in the world, whatever it may be. Please let us know. And I do appreciate your time being here today, Mr. Sanchez and Dr. McGinnis. Dr. Zuniga.
I'd like to just if you guys to hold off a minute. Earlier this afternoon, one of our committee members stopped by and dropped something off. And I want to provide these to Ms. Emerson for your time here this evening and for your commitment to our district math program over the summer. And Mr. Sanchez, also, you can give them to your wife, but you know, they're lovely, too. So we have two bouquets here on behalf of Victor Reese, our community member, and Gronk supporter in the Rosemead area, too, that he wanted to stop by and drop those off for you guys, too. So, thank you, guys.
You already coordinated it.
Come on up, Ms. Emerson.
Mr. Ruiz's family, you know, Latino family from Rosemead, they want to thank you guys for the work that you did. Because what you did, his granddaughter daughter advanced one year to pre-calculus in tenth grade. So that's a very wonderful thing. That that they show their appreciation. And they asked me, you know, you know, the district to deliver these flowers as a token of appreciation. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can we get a picture? Can we get a picture of all of us with them? Yeah, can we get a picture?
We are going to continue the the meeting, and we can take a photo when we conclude. We only have a few items.
I think they're leaving, though. You want to leave, right? Alex, are you leaving? Yeah, so we could get a picture.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. We're going to move on to our agenda. Before I go on, those of you paying attention, the Dodgers did beat the Phillies five zero. Our consent agenda, these items are approved by a single motion and and votes. There are two items on the consent agenda. Does anyone want to hold an item for discussion? Mr. Nguyen? Consent? Mr. Padilla?
No.
Dr. Galvez?
No.
Dr. Guzman? Nope. I have none. All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I motion.
Moved by Dr. Guzman. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by trustee Padilla. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to our regular agenda. Item number one, consider approval of agreement between the Del Monte Union High School District and Perry Weather. Their motion to approve this item.
Move to approve?
Moved by trustee Dr. Galvez. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by trustee Nguyen. Any discussion?
No.
Seeing none. All those in favor of approving item number one, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. Item number one is approved by a vote of five zero. Item number two, consider approval of resolution number oh-six dash twenty-five slash twenty-six in support of proposition fifty. Is there a motion to approve this item?
Both to approve.
Moved by trustee Dr. Guzman. I will second. Is there a discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
We're on item two?
Item two.
Yeah, I think just this is great. This is a this is a response to the Republican power grab in Texas. And I'm glad that we're able to do something about it. And I just want to commend Gavin Newsom for bringing this forward. And I hope that the state of California passes this. So I double down on this proposition.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Item has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. Item number two is approved by a vote of five zero. That concludes our agenda. We're moving on to roundtable and closure of meeting. Item number one, roundtable topic topics or issues to be brought forward for future agenda items. Trustee Nguyen?
The same thing. You know, the board want one responsibility for the board is making policy. And, you know, I haven't heard anything back from textbook adoption. So if there's none, then we should, you know, get together and make a policy out of it. And that's I want to bring it forward.
Thank you. Trustee Padilla?
Yes, I have my first item is, again, I would like to provide a certificate of recognition to Rio Hondo College Board for their investment in our community and also to honor Ms. Yolanda Emerson in front of her board. I would like to ask my colleagues for consensus if we could get a certificate. Mr. Breones, can we?
Do we want to invite them to? Do we want to invite their board to one of our meetings?
I would like to go up. Let's go visit the hill. Let's go up there and visit them to just show our great, you know, gratefulness of what they've done. I'd be willing, if there's a board member who has time, I'll go with you. Or if we can all go, this to me is a is a big thing. And I would like to personally go there. If anybody else would entertain it, I would be grateful.
So the request is to present certificates.
Of recognition to each board members of the Rio Hondo College Board.
At one of their meetings.
To Ms. Yolanda Emerson. I'm not sure when their next board meeting is, Dr. Zuniga.
Any objection to that?
No.
No.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, if anybody's available, whoever wants to go, I'll go with you. I know we all have different jobs, you know, some far away. But I'm willing to go with you.
Dr. Zuniga, if you could coordinate with Dr. Dreyfus.
Dreyfus, yeah.
On their next meeting and see if they can set aside some time for brief recognition.
Excellent.
And then, you know, coordinate on a date. I'll leave it up to them. I mean, public comment, and we could get three minutes. But if they want to set aside some time, it's really up to them, since it's at their meeting. Okay. Any other items?
Yes. And then the second thing that I wanted to talk about is, I want to make sure, go on record, I would like the passing rate of our traditional summer school from the summer, a breakdown of ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade, twelfth grade, you know, those students that participated in that traditional program, I want to see passing rates. The other item that I have is, I just want to make a comment that I agree with board member Breones in terms of demystifying the math instruction and how that all works. I agree with you one hundred and ten percent. I also agree with Mr. Luis Guzman regarding making sure that it is done in multiple languages, you know, the Cantonese, the Mandarin, the Vietnamese. I cannot agree more with that. So thank you for being on board with demystifying. Agree, I'm in agreement with you both. The other thing is, I would like to continue to remind, I want to get the loss of ADA report from each school. I know that the month one should be coming. I want to see the loss of ADA. Why do I say that? Because I know that a one percent increase in attendance district-wide will ensure that we get close to a million dollars into our budget to be able to buy program for our students. And we must continue to look at attendance and recouping those dollars to buy program. I know that I have talked about Mountain View, and I have talked about South Del Monte, and then I've also talked to Dr. Zuniga. In terms of equity, I know you guys know the definite definition of equity. Equity is not giving all of our schools the same amount of money, Dr. Zuniga. And we get we get this drilled into us in all of the conferences. Equity is giving each school what they need. And I truly believe that we can give more money to address attendance issues and incentivizing our students and swag and whatever it is that they would like to get more students to attend in those two schools. I really would like you to give us a report with each school's name and how much money they're currently getting, and what we can do more to support South Del Monte and El Mountain View High School. And then lastly, I would like to talk to my colleagues that I would like to start a committee at a Royal High School and in our community to name the career center at a Royal High School after the late Mr. George Reyes, the college and career coordinator there, for all of the work that he did over so many years. And if there's consensus for us to look into that, to give him, you know, recognition and praise and acknowledgement for all his years of service to the Arroyo High School community, I would really like to see if we can have a discussion about that, Board President Breones.
Are those all your items?
Yes, those conclude my items. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. For the request for information, if we can get them in our Friday memos, unless it's.
I'll leave that up to Dr. Zuniga. I know that whenever we're going to look into naming a building after a person, there's a process that we usually follow. I know that we followed that for Rosemead High School when we named the Rosemead Auditorium after Vicky Carr. I know there's got to be input from the community. This is something that they'd like to entertain. If, you know, I just think that this would be such an amazing way to honor him, you know. I worked with his wife, Yvette, in the Del Monte City School District. And he did some great things for so many kids for so many years at that high school. And I can't think of a better way to to honor his memory, to live on and to see his name in a in a place in our district. That's it.
I'll work with Dr. Zuniga on that one.
Sounds great.
For the data that you're asking, you're okay with that in Friday memo?
The data for the loss of ADA or the passing rate of the?
Both.
Yeah, I'm fine with, yeah, yes.
Thank you. Dr. Galvez?
Yeah, not in this week's Friday memo, but when we attended the CLSBA conference, we went to a session that talked about dual enrollment. I just feel like I don't know enough about that yet. It can be a Friday memo. It doesn't have to be a whole presentation. But I would like a breakdown of what dual enrollment looks like at our different sites. Like, is it integrated into the school day? Is it before school? Who has partnerships with what? How many courses are we offering? Just kind of like a little table telling us who's doing what where and when. Because I'm I'm really curious to know what that looks like. Because I think at some schools, it's before. At some schools, they can only take it after school. I don't know if we offer it during first period during any at any of our classes, at any of our campuses. And then I do have like a clarifying question. We were at something recently, and one of the principals said that our kids don't receive dual credit, meaning like they don't get credit for on their high school transcript and on their college transcript. And I don't think that was correct. So I just want to know how we're giving, well, I know that's not correct. So I want to know how we're giving kids credit for that. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Galvez. Dr. Guzman?
And again, that doesn't have to be, that's a big ass. So like, I'm not asking for this right.
You don't need it like right away. That's okay. Take your time. Does that include your roundtable? Thank you. Dr. Guzman?
Yeah, I want to echo the request for the summer bridge program. Whatever data we can provide, it doesn't have to be super extensive or a full report. It could be, again, in a Friday memo. But I do want to look into that data. And then two additional asks. One is the update or on the progress for the Child Youth Behavioral Health Initiative from the State of California Medi-Cal billing, CYBHI, yeah, to see where we're at with that. For the mental health component, especially now with everything that happened over summer, I want to I want to make sure that we're supporting as a board as much as possible. But I do want to know where we're at with that. And then an update on the completion on the transition center, the Adult Transition Center. I know you initially was eighteen months. I just want to see what the progress is at and if we're on time. Because I know that's an important topic for the community.
We have a construction update, I believe, scheduled for next month. So you'll see that.
Perfect timing. Thank you.
That includes your roundtable, Dr. Guzman? Thank you. I have no items tonight. Very quickly.
We had Mr. Don Quick that came to talk to us about Unión del Barrio, which was a an organization in LA that helps us protect our community during the, you know, ICE raids that we're having. I just wanted to share that I did go to that meeting all the way down to LA. And I got trained on by Unión del Barrio on things to help our immigrant community. Is it possible for us to bring a presentation from Unión del Barrio also to come here to talk about that, about, you know, helping our families and what we can do in addition to what we are already doing? Would there be consensus from our board to hear a presentation from some of the leaders from Unión del Barrio?
Do you have contact info?
Yes.
Send it over to Dr. Zuniga, and I'll coordinate with him.
Will do. Thank you so much. No further comments.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll move on to closed session. At this time, the board will not reconvene into closed session, as we completed all of our closed session discussion before regular session. So report out from closed session, Mr. Legal Counsel.
Mr. President, with reference to the published agenda, excuse me, section A two, items A, B, and C, as well as D, the board received information. No final action was taken. And that concludes the readout from closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Legal Counsel. This time, it is ten thirty-eight PM. And if there's no objection, we are adjourned.